So many. I have an extra pen. What about all that tape? They're attached. Thank you. Give it back. Thank you. Here. Ian. Ian.
In the sand, just to be real. I'm not gonna start with any of them.
Good evening, everyone. This is Thursday, December 8th, 7:00 PM. And I hereby call the order the Assistant Commission Meeting of Lake Powell Park. Welcome. Merry Christmas. It's good to see all of your, well, some of yours smiling. Um, good to see that. Appreciate your being here. Roll call. Zone 1. Zone 2, here. Zone 3, here. Zone 4, here. And the mayor is present, as well as the city attorney and city administrator. And we are off and running. Let's open the meeting now with our legislative prayers. Which I'm not sure how to call it. That's not, feels odd saying that phrase, but let's open the meeting. This is Ben Skoot. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Well, good evening, everyone. Let's bow our heads for just a moment if we can. Father, I want to thank you for probably the greatest time in history outside of Easter. When we celebrate the birth of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Lord, even when I go to the supply stores, I see a lot of Santa Claus, I see a lot of reindeer. I see everything but the nativity set. And I'm thanking you to, that even in the smallest city of Lake Powell, we're celebrating nativity sets throughout the town. And we have a train ride that goes out and seems Christmas goes. That our town, even though small, celebrates one of the greatest times in history and even today. The birth of Jesus Christ. We call it Christmas. Lord, I pray for every member of our commission, our mayor, all the people that are gathered here, all the residents of Lake Powell. That even though maybe these are difficult times for some, this would be maybe one of the greatest Christmases we've ever experienced. Lord, I'm asking that every person that lives in this town, who maybe reflect for just a moment about the real reason that Christmas even exists, will be thanking for having Jesus here. I say the Pledge of Independence.
I pledge the Pledge of Independence to the land of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Are there any additions, additions or modifications to the agenda? I have one. I would like to move item 10 to quasi initial theory. I'd like to move that to 6B. I think it's going to be quick and the people that are here for that, if they have reflected. Not any objection to that? There are none? We'll do that at our here. Also need a motion now for the approval of the minutes. Let me make a motion to approve. I have a motion from Mr. Bishop, second from Vice Mayor Vasco to approve minutes. Call it paper. Aye aye. Motion carries unanimously. How close to the end of the train are people coming up the stairs, are we?
Yes.
That's wonderful. We appreciate y'all being here this evening. Thank you. We have arrived at the presentation of Christmas lights winners. Yeah. And we do appreciate the fact that this town does celebrate Christmas in a big way. We really do. It's wonderful. Mr. Cook, have you some things to talk about this town? Please, take your place, Cook.
Well, once again, Christmas is upon us. The Butler Express is back. And the town definitely represented and came out and decorated. And we're very proud of them. They made us look amazingly. Everybody's very happy. And every year it gets a little better. And that's our intention. Bring back all those Christmas lights that were here way back in the day. I do have our winners. Have you guys are ready?
We are.
Sorry for the crowd, but you guys weren't a little nervous. It's friendly. It's friendly. It's all from the door. So, uh, let's see. You guys, alright. So best inflatables award went to Vinnie and Renee Paluti at Gas Plumbing Services. Hey!
Come on down.
Come on down.
They, uh, this family always does a great job for us. And everybody's very trusting it. And we thank you guys very much. Here's your prize money, or AKA power bill. Here's your sign. And you know how to, and you get a great amount out of it. You got a picture, right? Where are we going? This way?
I'm gonna sleep in here too, just 'cause.
Congratulations.
We do have, uh, we do have a quarter magician Michael Check with Josh. They do a big toy getaway next week. It's pretty cool. So I'll see if he got some, I'll get disconnected. But all the while I'm at that corner. No worries. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you again. I'm ready to go. Bring a piece there, they show it up. It's amazing. Alright. Next one, next one was our best griz wall, which was just like a hot pot of everything. And this is always a fun category. People get creative with it. It was Sean and Angie Vorgenzan. Is that right? I know you put him up too. This is the house on, off of John Street. For those of you who don't know, it's 671 Dara Circle. Dara, Dara, the Dara. It's off of John Street to the south of the John. And it's very lit up, the trees are lit up. Sean does an amazing job. And I try to get everybody to show you some love back there. I know you're. Thank you so much. We do have the sign. I just feel bad we can't go down there closer. So this is yours. Picture's up. Right here? Come on the side. Thank you for everything you guys did. We appreciate it. Alright, uh, next one. Best traditional. What's it? The Smith family, 272 West New York Avenue. Yeah, you're right there. And Ralph, and what's the story behind this? This was a Christmas gift, because this is your parents' house, right? So this is Ralph's parents' house. I guess the easiest way for you to explain it is across from Ricky Mom's house, if you're familiar with that. So, the house directly across is where his dad lives. And this was a Christmas gift that you and your wife and your family got it and you decorated their house for him. And that's awesome. That's good stuff. Thank you. Let me get your sign. Or your dad's sign. You gotta put it up too. Alright, guys. Hold that. Here's your money tip. You gotta give that to your parents too. That's how hard it is. Alright, Susan Taylor, where are you at? Kayla, come on down. These are the folks that Nativity Seen. They're the ones that sponsor it. You see the cute little sign around town with the phone number on it. This is the lady. She kind of listens to her little project. This is our second year, right? So they sponsor that. The prize money is from them, as obviously Butler Express supports it. But the prize money comes from this nice family. And obviously you have the legacy. People have really gotten into this. The nativity thing is growing like you want it. Uh, do you want to say something? Do you want to say it for the winner after?
Well, isn't it great just to live in a city like Lake Powell? Where we can have a express and a contest like this. And you can't do that everywhere. Oh, fantastic. He's the perfect person for the job. Because he, um, he just takes care of everyone. He makes it fun. And he's so good for ideas. So I prepared it last year. I'll give it a chance. And so we're willing to do that. And for the winner, um, obviously I love, last year's contest was great. I love it all. But this one was different. If you haven't been down.
312 Lake.
Be sure to go down there and see quite an array of angels individually, handcrafted in memorance of their work, all made individual. So, it was in that, what I thought.
Yes.
And Marcia is here tonight to take the, um, more.
Yes. Marcia's over there.
This is Laura E. O., and you're Marcia Dickinson. Thank you, you guys. 312 Lakeboro. Again, uh, it's pretty easy to pick out. It's about halfway on Lakeboro on the lower side. You won't miss it. It's a beautiful thing just to go check out. Thank you, guys. Sign? Everybody did it. It's a big one. Thank you. Thank you, guys. We appreciate the support. Uh, I know Lake Powell loves the train, and the train loved Lake Powell. I guess, uh, so, we had a great weekend last weekend. It was nice and calm and steady, but the storm was coming, so. Obviously, we got to break and stuff on Saturday, and we're gonna go right into, um, the training. 6 o'clock to put on the break stuff, but I got Santa Claus all ready to go. His sleigh and reindeer are polished up. So hopefully everybody will come out. We'll see everybody Friday, Saturday. And keep spreading that Lake Powell love. Thank you, guys. Thank you all the winners. Uh, we have to. My good friend, Mike Butler, stand up. You know I do this every time today. You knew it was coming. Mr. Butler's son is here tonight. Give him all the best wishes. He's, uh, awesome family. It's very special that he comes and visits us. And he'll be around. You guys come down and see him. Uh, he'll tell you a couple of stories, but amazing stuff. We love you, guys. And we'll let you do business. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
We all probably thought it would be a really dull part of the meeting, wouldn't you agree? Next is consent agenda. Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and acceptance of bills taken before? I have a motion from Vice Mayor Vasco, second from Mr. Bishop. I learned this.
You'll get it. It's okay.
Do we have any discussion? Call it paper? Alright. Any votes? Motion carries unanimously. And I skipped right over what I had intended to be 6B. We'll make it, um, 7B instead. We'll move now to the quasi initial hearing, certificate of appropriateness. All that's ordered. Have there been any ex parte communications from any of the commissioners regarding these items before us? No. Do I have, it's fine a shame that none of these are contested in any way. But this is the quasi initial hearing. If anybody wants to speak, they will be heard. Do I have any motions from the commission to accept these?
I'm not a motion to accept these.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Bishop, the second from Commissioner Rutledge, to accept the items A and C in the quasi initial hearing for, to accept us for creating a certificate of appropriateness. I gotta slow down. Trying to do this fast, but I think we can get out of here very quickly this evening. I'm doing it right. But I'm tonifying myself, so I'll slow down just a little bit. All in favor of approving these? Say aye. Any votes? Motion carries? Yes, approved as recommended by the District Attorney. Correct. Thank you for that verbiage. We appreciate it. Okay. Next in the agenda is item 8A, approval of final plat for the faith subdivision. Wow, I didn't slow down enough. The faith road subdivision. Mr. City Administrator, would you like to introduce this?
I would. And we have a city engineer this today too, who explains the technical, answering technical questions you may have. Essentially, the city approved the preliminary plat a number of months ago. Developer then constructed his project in accordance with that. And then there are two surveys. One for the developer, one for the city. Who surveyed the property and certified the improvements requested were made according to the desires of the city. With that, it is now time for you to formally approve the final plat. And with the final plat, then the property manager starts assigning house numbers and values to the properties. And the construction period will begin for the actual residences. Uh, there's one thing I checked with assistants, I'd like you to know, who's of course Cooky, that Lake Pearl Road has been since its creation technically part of this particular piece of ground. And with this plat, it is being now dedicated to the city. So the portion of Lake Pearl, I'm sure you all recognize as part of this project, uh, is now a public property. And your action tonight will transfer the property from the developer to the city for the line of ownership of the road.
I only got one question. You want to go first?
No, I was just gonna say, this is technically also a quasi initial hearing, because we are taking our rules applying it to an applicant, so we probably should dispose of our communication fees.
Okay, thank you.
None.
Well, we'll do that then. We'll open a second quasi initial hearing for sake of approving, um, this final plat. Again, anybody who wants to speak on this will be heard. Uh, have there been any ex parte communications concerning this with any of the commissioners? None. The ex parte communications also consist of discussions with staff, I don't think they do.
There's not a discussion.
Okay, so I do not either. Did you have, was there anything further on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vasco, what were you?
What was, my question was, um, were there any, um, alterations made on heels of this five year plan that we had?
No, 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 Mr. Sir. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from any other commissioners?
Um, just, just in that, there was a lot of talk about a section on the southern part of the stormwater retention area plat not being, stopping water from flowing into the lake. The retention pond was incomplete at the time of storm hit, so there was no way to control it at that time. It has since then been completed.
That is interesting. I hadn't seen that. I would also say that the retention ponds only handle a certain amount. They're only designed.
Yeah, it's got a motor for the tubes that are able to flow. Joe wasn't blessed with the unfinished part.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Butler, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? I have a motion from Vice Mayor Vasco, second from Commissioner Bishop, to approve the final plat for the faith road subdivision. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye aye.
Any votes? Like a sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mister Engineer and staff and everybody who worked hard on that project. Big project. Next is item 8B, approval of engineering design proposal for the CBG number two, Melissa Park. Mr. City Administrator.
And Mr. Mayor, remember the question. This is a rather a medico occasion for Melissa Park. After 25 years of discussion and planning and give and take, we now have a plan accepted by the community in terms of design. The street design elements, so all funded by, um, a CBG. The playground, the basketball, and the lake areas. And this particular approval is for the basketball and the general conditions of the park, the drainage, the road going through the park. It also contains provisions for the division of, excuse me, for the design of the wall, what we refer to as the wall. We had had an indication that there may be a contribution made for the construction of the wall. And we have not yet had any confirmation of that, just in writing. So, uh, we have proposed to you the design, the criteria, the proposal and alternate. The original plan is not included, the wall is not included, et cetera, item. If you wish to have that included, it simply can't be made with one motion, which would improve, uh, the wall as part of the design proposal. I think with that, I'll just stop and see if there's any questions.
No, I'll make a motion to approve the engineering design work for Melissa Park, including the alternate if and when it becomes necessary. The wall, I'll, yes, the wall. I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Vasco, the second from Commissioner Rutledge, to approve the engineering design proposal for CBG number two in Melissa Park. Any further discussion? I do have Luke Park and Nancy Weir.
Nancy Weir, 435, that's done there. I just wanted to confirm, we have already spent, I believe, $45,000 in engineering for this to date? Am I correct?
That sounds about right, but I don't know an exact number. We've spent quite a bit on engineering already.
We have. Is all that necessary to spend an additional $36,000 on engineering in addition to the $45,000? I mean, it really cuts into your budget.
It does. I think most of the, and do you want me to interrupt you? I'm not, I don't need to interrupt.
No, no, no. I, I.
I believe it does. I know CBG grants require excessive, that may not be the right word, require a lot of engineering. And, Mr. City Administrator, better.
They do. Uh, the CBG grant is a great thing to have. We have two of them for Melissa Park. But they do require extensive engineering. They require competitive bids. Even though, uh, we know similar bids that are received by the company itself. We cannot use those bids. We have to go separately to do it. It's, it's one of those grants that you wonder why you got it, because it's expensive to administer. But it does require it. Also, I would point out that a lot of this work was done to really finalize the design of the, of the park. the design of the, of the park according to the wishes of the community. And again, this was one of the projects when I first arrived two years ago, that was in the works and had been in the works, Paul Smith tells me about twenty-five years. So the work brings it to a head, we did that, it is necessary, you really wanna do it the right way, to have engineering, not only as a plan, but actually to construct something according to engineering. I would say it's absolutely necessary to the funding. And yes, it does seem like a tremendous amount of money, is a tremendous amount of money. But parks are very expensive items, the division rises.
Do you have an idea of what that would leave us for a bunch of the work apart? For the equipment, basketball court?
No, this is only the design, and again, requires you have a competitive bid, we really don't know the costs of the, of the things to leak and install, you know, both playground equipment and the basketball court and the others, so we could be competitive.
You really can't get a final number until you send it out bid.
Aren't we accepting the bids in January?
We have, I think we are. Yeah, Derek, Derek is here to answer that. I think the last eight questions on CBG two is tomorrow. And with that, they will, they'd be contractors will start publishing up their numbers. It is due in January.
Good evening. Mary Christmas everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, the final eight questions from interested contractors is tomorrow. Attendance are maybe following week, and we intend to open the bids before Christmas, so that we can bring you a recommendation for the construction in January. And well, the only part for folks on is playground equipment at this time.
For this, for this grant?
Yes. So we've got these things going on, we've got the design for the city. What you're doing tight is the design for the rest of it.
But what the bids are for is for the playground.
The current bid hour is this little bit here.
Just the playground for the basketball court too.
Yes.
For bids, that's what's actually gone out to bid.
Yes.
The others will go out to bid, they just have to get this first thing that's going on, that's great. I'm glad we got things going out to bid, that is a huge, huge step. Things are really happening with that.
Yeah, we get them.
Yep. Thank you.
When can we accept the basketball court to go outside?
Usually a site plan from that side will take a long time. Takes about four to five months to get to a point where you can take it to the back. So if we get approval tonight, our local order is all five, six, ten, ten.
May, may also.
Okay, I, I guess I was misunderstanding, I thought we did that at the last meeting, where we approved for that to move forward, coming up.
We, we approved the concept, iteration true. But when we compare with that, we've already designed the playground equipment, and that is out of bid, visit committee, with the rock commission in January. The second one is the second CBG project, which is for everything else. We just tend to set the basketball court first, for everything else in the park that the commission has said to do. And not including the wall. And that, that will be, is what Derek's saying is gonna be five to six months of the design. Yes.
Derek, is there some way that we can partial let it that we design and make it part of the last one, so we can settle it in process? It's painful to hear that we're gonna have to put it out for six months to put it in basketball court, I mean, what's building?
Well, it's design of the driveway as well, it's not... If it was a basketball court, if I was a fool, stood here and told you it's gonna take five to six months, I'd approve it. But it's not, it's we have to do a little bit of thinking, we have to build a plan profile for what that road is actually gonna look like. So there's a plan including the curb, but the voice of the residents was we wanted to make more of a layout of dirt road inch, as I recall, this is, this is an old picture. So in order for that to hold up the way you want it to hold up, we have to curb it, and then put your buildings on top of that, and then your fabric, your structure. Obviously, I'm just gonna here give myself a little bit of reading there. Okay, it's, I'm here to say it's complicated as it is. But getting an organization of an engineering department to focus on projects that are, what do we have, thirty-something thousand dollars? When other project managers have projects that are one point two to five million.
Sure.
So...
Anything that you can do to...
Yeah, I will. I now have a gap tech that works directly for him, so he's gonna help to process the...
Alright.
Now that I have one on staff, I can tell them what to do and what not to do.
Thank you.
But I do have to get myself to the board.
Miss Smith, Paul, did you wanna speak on this, on this topic as well?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Paula Smith, at Water District, I love it, Michael. I have, well, I wanna know who in the community has seen your plans? Because she said the community haven't accepted this. Have anybody seen that, these guys, y'all? Because I know I haven't seen it.
You've seen it really?
No, I'm talking about the ones you're trying to get approved. I've seen several, but who else decided which one was going? That's why I'm confused. And the first thing you said, you was jerking off with the basketball court, basketball court, and you had, um, got a bid in from White House or somebody, somebody local. This was early part of the year. Y'all came up, uh, and said something about the White House or somebody here in the county, not the basketball court. You had a bid, so I'm kinda confused.
I don't think we had an actual bid, I think we had an estimate of...
Well, an estimate from the White House, but I'm just confused, because I thought the first thing we was gonna do was the basketball court and the playground. So now you're saying it's gonna be another six months? I understand about the road, but, you know, this would be twenty twenty-four, we still don't have anything. Because he's saying it's gonna take at least six months to, uh, to come up with a plan. Then it's gonna take two or three months to do, and the next thing you know, it's gonna be January of twenty twenty-four. It's just, you know, we just keep talking about it. I'm just confused, because if you let us say we're gonna accept something, please show us some pictures. Don't just say the community, because you'll be lying, because the community has not seen it. We've seen some plans, we've seen three or four plans. But if we're gonna accept something, if we need to see it, how hard is it for you to say, uh, could y'all come down, or somebody in the community come down and look at something? Don't just assume, we are human too, and we have rights.
As you know, we met in the first iteration, and you were the third people, including yourself, and you said, I'm excellent.
Yes.
And we had not a design, we had a concept.
We had a concept, but do you understand we...
Basically, from that, from that concept, we made changes according to what the community, who was in that room, said they wanna play, and it was designed for two, okay? Then we had further designing changes based on concept comments that came here to the commission, and then we had a design for three, what behind this, behind this, actually designed for two.
Okay, well, have you put that to see it?
Those are, those are concepts, okay? The commission then said they wanna turn that third concept, which everybody in the room had a chance to comment on the last meeting, into engineering drawings. And that's what we're working tonight, is engineering drawings. And those drawings that we used to go out to bid, were actually still, now, if you know CBG, you gotta have competitive bids. And you can't get competitive bids without design, engineering designs, not concepts.
Right, but, but I'm saying, you're saying engineer designs, but when are you gonna bring a community to, and to see it happen? You decide what you want, how you want it to look?
No.
You know, it's people...
Well, that's what the concept...
Paula, Paula, you were at every meeting, I remember the first day. I'm not, I'm not the only one in the community, I'm saying, have you brought this to make the community see it? That's all I'm asking, yes or no?
Yes, we have.
When, 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 please, please tell me when.
I can't remember the date.
Okay, but I'm saying, okay, but, okay, when, when you sat at the meeting, that was the first meeting you had downstairs. Since then, you have had two others, then the third. Have you brought it back to the community, yes or no?
It's time, it's time.
Each time you should have brought it to the community.
It's, it's time.
You can't just assume we're gonna accept what you want. We are, you know, we want to know, and we want answers, and we want answers now. And we're tired of going round and round and circle you. I, I'm your biggest fan, but you can't just say the community accepts something, because we did it enough. We did, I'm not the only person in the community. Like I told you before, reach out to churches, put announcements out for people to know. Don't just assume. Just don't assume. Everybody else might not say nothing, but I'm gonna say what's on my mind, you know that by now.
Well, Miss Smith, I'm, I'm sorry, feel like we have not been open about this.
You have, you have, I'm just trying to keep it real, you have. You know, you might have talked to me, I'm not the community, it's other people live here who's been here knowing they need. We gotta do better as communication.
Well, if you're gonna be frank with us, I'll be, I'll be frank back.
Yes.
If you don't mind, we'd be a little blunt. This is the representative body of the community. We have been elected to do these things, we have gone through the process, we've gone through the process openly here in public. Every step of the way has been absolutely public. It's been noticed, and each meeting has been recorded, it's been public documented. We've done this process openly in the community, in public. This is the way the system is designed, this is where the money gets flowed, gets appropriated and designs are, are ordered, concepts are created here in this, in this hall. This is where this happens.
I understand that, I understand it to the fullest.
Okay.
But don't say, you, you can say, we decided in a meeting, don't say that you brought it to the community. How hard is it? Sometimes you gotta communicate, some people don't feel comfortable coming here. See, I can, I can fit in anywhere. I can fit in anywhere. This person right here, I can fit in anywhere, anywhere. But sometimes you have to bring things to people. It's not all about what's going on in this, inside of these school walls. We have to go out in the community, and we're gonna say community. So you know, just keep it real. My lady keep it real, you keep it real, just like, just like the church. Just like church, it's not just inside of the school walls, it's outside, it's communication. And that's what we need here in Lake County. People don't feel comfortable. He could have had a town meeting, uh, when he first came, and he just go to, um, uh, Madison James, and then, and then I... He could have taken the part, sometimes you have to take things to people, you know that. When you were saying, where did you go, to the people?
Yes.
So, you know, how hard is it? Nobody ain't gonna hurt nobody, just feel free, you just got to do things. But even if you do have a town hall meeting, none of y'all come, so you know what I'm saying? How hard, it ain't gonna hurt nobody.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
And that's, if I, if I can... I can interject. Some of the most important, informative meetings that I've been to with the community was when the citizens were requested to have a meeting at Melissa Park itself. And I was there to hear what they had to say. A lot of misinterpretations from the past were explained at that meeting. So I understand where she's coming from, to where if you have a meeting and with them, and said that them coming to us, you get better work for you. Well, and, and I appreciate that, and I will interject, right on top of that, I'll say that when we do have town hall meetings and things like that, that are not here in the chambers, only one commissioner can be there. And only one commissioner, uh, we can't, they can't then bring that back to us until the next commission meeting. They can come back and make a report during the next commission meeting about what happened at that town hall meeting. They can't even talk to, you know, we can't talk to each other outside of this building, or excuse me, outside of this meeting. So, community meetings, town halls, things like that are important, but they, this is where the actual process of approving and creating expenditures takes place. Town halls are good for concepts, and they, the concept design was tweaked as a result of some of those. And bringing it back here. So, anyway, got two more, uh, three more blue cards. Jennifer, you're next.
Jennifer Mullins, two seventy-one, what's your opinion? I have a question, if this plan is already drawn up, already done, why was it not in our packet for everybody to see? And there's a lot of words in that packet, and there's a whole list, but there is no plan, no concept, I mean, no drawings, no anything inside the packet. If you're truly being transparent, then why wasn't it put on the website? You guys have a website. Why wouldn't it put on the website? This is what we're planning. We spent...
This is in the packet that I got.
It's not in our packet out here. It wasn't online in the packet.
It's in the packet that's on the website? Oh, the concept plan, we're not approving the concept plan.
You're not approving the plan?
This is the engineering drawings, we're approving the engineering, which will allow us to send it out bid.
So the playground's ready to get put out to bid, where was that planned?
That was approved about a month and a half, two months ago, by the commission. This is for the contract, for the boards, for the commission group. So we've been designing, by engineering design, what was the second CBG grant, and the third iteration.
So how much was the CBG grant?
They were both about sixty-two thousand.
So this is over half of the CBG grant, and so to the engineering?
And that, the CBG grant is way less than the political...
You can, you can say it that way, or you can say, the CBG grant will be funding the all of...
Do we have a final number on what that playground, sorry?
This, this CBG grant will be funding all of the engineering. And then the city's gonna have to kick in a lot as well, but it is, it is real money going towards this project, because we, we decided it was a work requirement to pursue. It does require some additional engineering, things like that, it raises standards. But, and, and the, and some of the expenses it raises, but it also brings real money to the community.
Do we have a final figure on what the actual playground equipment or any of that was gonna be?
That's what, that's what we addressed a few minutes ago, is that we don't really have final figures until it's sent out a bid, and then you get real, real bids in from contractors.
But do we have like a, a...
Right now, we have, we have...
A clue on what we're going to spend, or how much we're gonna allot to spend?
We have estimates from, from the engineer, are part of the process along the way. We have estimates, and then there is... Another, I believe it's Ms. Smith. Mr. Smith? Thank you for coming this evening, and I haven't seen you here before, so I'll say, if you would state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ms. Smith, four twenty-three North Billings Street, in Holland, Florida. We looked at plans from the beginning, and you came up saying that we was gonna do four phases from the beginning. Nine drops by to two, and that's the best off foot and the playground.
No, no, I'm sorry, did you, are you looking for answers to that? I'm not, I know we didn't interrupt.
Yes.
Okay, well, we haven't dropped it back to simply two phases. This is, tonight, we were voting on the CBG, CBG grant number two. That's where the number two is...
All right, my question is, go ahead, the bid is on all of it, and going to hold it at one time, instead of trying to go out the bid for this, the bid for that, and the bid for this. All the bids can go out at the same time.
They can, but each, there's two different grants that we're pursuing, so those bids go out in attendance with one another. The first one was simpler to put together and send out bid, so we did that more quickly. This one's a little bit more detailed, and the technique a little bit bonker, rather than make everything wait until the most complicated one is done, we're doing it, and I said...
All right, but show us, like you said, if you would have something, y'all said y'all agreed on, uh, the plans, whatever you wanna do. But we definitely agree on something, like they've been talking about, it's like, we all get the same question, uh, we need answers. Show us, you might show us something. And that's what Paula just really asked us. You got this one, that one tells us nothing. This don't tell us nothing. Tonight, you should have had, uh, originally one or two, talking about a couple minutes to the top. Not this year. You shouldn't draw it already and put on a board.
Actually, that was before the commission last meeting. The, the, the die number three was before the commission that last... The iteration was brought up and from that, the commission gave us...
The iteration was brought up and from that, the commission gave us approvals, it was called, the engineering, the contract, and the review of the day. I will point out to everybody in question that every time we met on the subject, either meeting, we got up downstairs, the community, or up here, it was not unanimous approval of anything we put up. So, we took what we thought was the majority opinion, and we did reduce the project from about a number of different activities down to just basically two, and a third come up later, that's the building. And so, now you have a big tall, the playground, and it's out to bid right now. We're asked to do design drawings, so we go off the bid on what's left, which we have never probably sent away to the basketball court, it's much more than that. Coming down the road is going to be plans for the buildings, and then there are still other features that could be incorporated into plan, but they're not even in the discussion stage at this point.
What I'm looking at also is, okay, the basketball court is big. We don't need that done yet now. Playground equipment, that's great. When you look at the building, that's the problem. It's the most, we're in the building, and they call it this time, when it comes down to functions. So, why not? I wasn't here the last meeting, but it should have been called up, that we should, with the playground equipment and the building, because if things need to be done now, it's not up to code, and that's what we should have been looking at from the beginning. And not just basketball, the basketball court, how much of the code do you need to have to bring the basketball to stand within the feat? But your building as a whole, where it's being used, you can't put the number of people that the fire department, or whatever, they expect for you to not have an award or those that you're not in there, it's all wrong, but you can't seat half of those people in there. But you're in the building, like, this is something that, oh, it's great, but it's not great. So, what we need to do is go back and look at it and say, "Hey, let's do this building." I know that we have been going through this and that, and things hasn't changed, but I feel like the building system, what it tells, and everybody around me, you can't fill a lot of taxes. And I feel like that, that's one thing that we should look back at and go forward that way, instead of doing the basketball court.
Can I say something?
Okay.
The reason that we're doing the playground equipment and the basketball court, I could be wrong, is because of the CBG grants, and there's only certain things they can be used on, and they will expire. Am I right? Is that why we're moving in that direction? I believe that's why.
Each CBG grant was applied for a specific project in mind, that we need to then construct. First one's for playground, second one is for, again, everything else that has been authorized to be constructed. You cannot take those funds and transfer them to a totally different project. You have to stay within the application for those funds. So, they do have to be treated separately, oh, yeah, for the grant. And they are two separate funds, they're student grants. Each has their own reporting procedures and, but there's going to be a process and additional art funding available that we can...
Oh, yes.
Do the...
Yeah, absolutely, and we will need the art funding. It's, I have a second question for the community. I'm looking at a concept plan here, and it's not that one, it's over there, I'm, we're this...
Everybody's just laying there.
Okay. And I think what needs to happen, because what this gentleman's gonna do with this company, he can work with his whole concept plan, and he's gonna do the engineering, so we can phase it out, and get to the development. Two things need to happen as far as I'm concerned. Number one, the community needs to be satisfied with the conceptual plan before we do anything here. Number two, we need to compartmentalize each phase of what we're doing. Now, the playground equipment is already out there. I remember giving quotes to the city four years ago just to redo the basketball court, but I couldn't do it because I sit up here and I'm not allowed to do that. So, that got put, kicked down the road. But at the end of the day, before we can really do deeper teeth into any of the rest of this, the engineering for the concept has to be done. The road has to be done, the curbs have to be done, drainage has to be done, we have to consider all of that. And then we can phase it out. What I'd like to hear from the community is, what do you want when we phase it? Because they can look at the basketball court and say, "Okay, this estimate what it's gonna take." We can look at the building and say, "Okay, here's an estimate of what it's gonna take." And then, the community can decide, as we're all concerned, what you want to do next. You follow me? And so, do we wanna slow down and not approve the engineering of this tonight to make sure that the community is accepting the concept plan?
Yes.
If that's what we wanna do, we don't need to do that, because we have a rather tight constraints for the CBD.
Well, we have until March, right? We have until March to actually complete the project.
Right.
You know, not, not just the design, the complete project.
Make the engineering portion of the project, or the entire project.
And that's the CBG number one. Number two, does not have a deadline yet, but it will. The CBG, the individual accounting, has said that all of them maintain projects, they will keep the grant open. If we go back to drawing the board, delay the project for an inordinate amount of time, we could and probably would lose the grant. Now, we're talking about grant number two, not grant number one. Number one is progressing, that's the fourth grant. It's grant number two is what we're talking about right now, and that is, everything except the playground, which the commission authorized to do. Which is, I call it iteration number three. It's the design, which was at the goose at the meeting, I helped with, individual community, which was reviewed again by the commission and the community at the last meeting, and so it's down to the third iteration, which is probably going for engineering plans.
And I will say, Ms. Smith, that when we were looking at this, at the, I think it was the last meeting, maybe the before that, we had the building, which you're right, isn't, it needs work, we're all aware of that, and we agree that things, none of us, but we disagreed with exactly where exactly we go. And we also have a election right in the middle of that. But there were some disagreements as to where it should go, and we didn't wanna delay the entire thing, so we worked that out to work on that, and I think we'll have a plan on that.
Yeah, that, we're gonna put the first name, like Paul had been saying, it'll be two, three, because, I believe, Paul, you look at the older part up, because you're gonna take another, you go into another year, almost a year, for the playground equipment, you know, if you look at there, into the playground equipment, and the basketball court, and what's gonna happen, we're gonna push the building back, because we're gonna say, we're not gonna end up saying that you're gonna have a function. That's what we're gonna end up having.
Well, I appreciate your concern, and word of warning there. I don't think we will, but I appreciate your concern.
It'll have to be four different things.
Well, thank you, Ms. Smith. I have three more cards. Nancy Wick, Nancy Wick.
Yeah, I did.
We got Sophie, we've been...
I have, I have, exactly. Nancy, very old, ready by myself, however. We did bids for the basketball court in the past year, and the basketball court and the playground equipment was supposed to be the part of the first CBPG grant. Can they still reduce those bids before due date's coming out, or the court? She's going now. We, we had already gotten bids for the basketball court.
No, they're getting them.
We already passed them. We got them within the past year.
Okay, inform about this. They were, they were asked of us, and they were...
Okay, um...
And you asked, you can give me a question, yes, it's due a time out.
Okay, okay. The other thing was, I know that when we, we had our last meeting, the community did, and Mr. Paul was there, then asked the commissioner, you had messaged him and told him, he asked you what the, what the funds available were for, and you had told him four hundred thousand dollars. So, that, the answer, what everybody's asked for later, I don't know if that was still there, and that was half of what was initially proposed on the curbs rendition. So, I think that was, you know, good, considering we had two or three CBPG grants, we had the twenty-five thousand dollars for the snout food, the five K grants, and, you know, community, some money, it just, I worried about getting into all the engineering, and I understand that, you know, there's aspects that have to be done, I just, I hope that we can come to a point where we can get this done, and getting harder.
Try, I can answer. Kirk Snell?
Good evening, Merry Christmas to you all. I just wanna say, are we even looking into Echo, on this? Are we trying to create Echo grants, I know we should have the last one? But are we even looking at, it's under Echo, both stations outdoors, H stands for historical, and they're putting a wall up there, from what I understand, it's supposed to be something histor- historical. Are we looking into this to help offset the cost instead of using a splash phone or a ARPA? I mean, it's hard to throw it out there, because we can help offset some of the costs if we get some Echo running for this, instead of just, just trying to use CBPG money with the cost that we're looking at, that, I think, makes it almost half the money.
The wall, the wall is a pride of citizens, but it is no cost to see that all.
But with the wall, it can still constitute as that part being something historical, or something like that to help offset getting that?
It is not for America, it is a citizen.
Okay, but outdoor also, though. With the, yeah, so we can probably try to get Echo, you know?
No, they're not, it's just...
Have you read, oh, did?
I am, yeah.
Did I talk to the other person, said, "Up the outdoor"? So, with that being said, we can just begin to try to get that in, because it does apply to the outdoor part of it. Cause I spoke to a person, he said, "On the door", and he said, "This is perfect for Echo".
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, of course.
Uh, Mr. Minister?
We did call the Echo staff, and we explained the entire project, the iterations, and there have been, none of the things we were doing qualified for Echo grants. And basically, and I said, "Well, we have the building in particular, their definition of historical building is, is a building like the city hall, not simply old building, that is much loved and apart, but it has no historical value, other than it's a very heavily used part of its generation, it doesn't fit their criteria of historical building." So, they said, basically, there was nothing that they could do to help.
All right, well, like I said, I spoke to someone at Saturday board also, so I will be doing a D R request for that, in exchange, then to find out exactly...
Through the phone, no.
Of course it was, all right. Uh, it's happened, I mean, I've got my sense for it, but...
No, no, it's, I understand, of course, it's a phone request, I mean, well, I will talk, maybe I'll, we'll have, we'll have the guy who's on the Echo board, see if he can come down and talk about it as well. Because, I mean, I know this is a long-term program, it's not, I want the party to go, I want it not to go away, I want the party to get done as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Really, really, thank you, Ms. Smith. And, all that's best, I have one more card for you. We have spoken on this already, so...
You don't know what I'm gonna say?
No, I don't know what you're gonna say, but I do know you have been on this already.
I got, I got, I got. My name is Paulette Smith, eight forty U S T, Land Row, Lake Island. I have a question, Lee, if I'm not mistaken, I heard you say something had to be completed by March, is that the playground has to be completed by March?
That's the, the CBPG grant number one, which is the playground, had a termination date, it was about October one. We have received an extension until March, but again...
I understand how to...
But I'm usually pushing that they were...
Right, but I'm just saying, but I heard you say it complete by March, so I'm just trying to find out whether the playground equipment will be completed, well, maybe this is a question for you, will the playground equipment be completed by March? Because he said completed by March, so I'm confused, that's why I got that thought, because I heard the word completed by March, so I just wanna know.
CBG said it has to be completed by March.
Right.
Not the engineer, not the city.
Right, I'm just trying to...
And then, it says October one, we apply some extension.
Right.
We'll apply another extension, I guess, which will...
Right, now, will we see, will we see something, a ground, if somebody breaking ground, or give a seesaw, or swing out there, how we even, how the community even decided? I know, back when we had a meeting downstairs, I told you specifically more that swings, I just wanna know, is the community gonna be part of making it to see from what's gonna be in the playground? Since there are many ones playing here, seem like they should have some input, that's all I'm asking, you know, when he said completed. When you say complete to me, that made it will. So, that's, that's the only question I have, but you said you know what I'm gonna talk about, but you didn't.
That's, that's not, I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, that's not...
Okay, I'm just letting you know, I'm just letting you know, let's keep it real, you know, I'm gonna keep it real with you.
I appreciate that.
Okay, uh, Lee, I'm waiting, I'm waiting on the answer, are we gonna have, are we gonna have at least something to ground, something done, or permit, or something by March first? You know, if we have a permit, that's good, we're not even starting.
Okay, Lee, if I may ask, we do have those out the bid now, when are those bids supposed to come back in?
Those are the bids that Eric said, being, just before Christmas, and we did it in such a way, one of the, one of the comments at the meeting downstairs was that there is a particular design that was thought to be a better design than what we had selected at that particular time, and so we incorporated that design, taking the communities, the community's, but we put that into the RFP, and that's what we did up. But we also have to work for acceptable equals, which means that we'll probably get three or four, depending on the number of bidders, variations of the things of what they consider appropriate according to our plan. Then, when those come in, they'll be brought to the commission, with a recommendation. Certainly, we can have the community look at those plans, and express their opinion to the commissions. But yes, there's, you know, everything is really, they're much more open than I'm being told. This is a very open process, and the community is, I will tell you, the community is not united at this point, I'm sure you've heard some of that, it's not... But anyway, that's it.
A few things are actually unanimous, and that's, that's okay, we're a community, it's like in a family, you have to make a decision to keep going, but really, they're unanimous. But we will have apparently bids before us, hopefully by January meeting, and we'll have apparently options to choose from, perhaps, and then what comes back, we don't know what will come back, but odds are, and options will come back, and we'll get to look at that, and choose one, and usually, once you choose one, once you offer people money, they tend to actually start performing work. I mean, it really will happen pretty quickly at this point. This is where things, this is where steps progress pretty quickly.
So, you know, we should have a permit by, since we, I know it won't be completed by March, so we should get that out of there, saying we'll be completed later, we'll be, hopefully, we will have a permit or something by March.
Once we have, once we have those bids, once we have those bids in front of us, once we have those bids before, and accept the bid, the progress should be very quick to happen. I don't know exactly how quick, but...
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, whether it might, you know, you say, "Well, hopefully we'll have a permit, or I think we'll have a permit, something", you know, we want something to go on, we're on this one here, okay, it's gonna go out and bid, okay, it can go out and bid, but like I said, he said March it will be complete. He shouldn't have said that, because that, that's gonna make people want to, want to consider March, you wanna go out and see playground equipment.
He's just saying what, the same, the completion date is set right now, as he said also, that, they had a completion date originally, not come through, it might have extended, currently it's in...
Well, we don't talk...
Well, that's why, that's one of the reasons you will hear we get times to quit it, as to how quickly this is gonna get done, because it's difficult, and it's like, it's like Quicksilver. It's, 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 Mr. Spatter, I've been in the construction industry my whole life, on bid day, usually within a few days, easily inside a week. The group that gets picked...
The group that gets picked, and we will pick them in January, or pick somebody with any luck at all, we'll pick our winner. And we will contact them in a week. And typically, it stays, we only hit the ground 30 to 60 days after.
Right, so you know, it's.
Because, because it's not a lot of work to do. They'd probably be able to do what they're, they're doing in weeks' time, starts. So could we be done by March? Yes.
Yes, that's probably.
Could we come in here with a bunch of bids in January or we can say, totally, we can totally look at this stuff's cost. This is ridiculous, blah, 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 we'll address this. Or we have to go find a funding mechanism and say, okay, we're fine, we're gonna do this.
Right.
But with any luck at all, in January, we have a decision, we'll pick a contractor, we'll notify them, they'll let us know, and then get in there and be the. Then we can have a finite answer.
Okay, but on that, what's going in the park? I know in the meeting downstairs, they were saying about those swings. And I told Derek or whatever, we specifically want swings because kids play on swings. And I'm just, I just want to know. You know, we want to see what's going in there. We don't just want to stay here.
If I under, if I understood the city literally, that's one of the reasons we left some, we left some flexibility in that bid from the request proposal. We left some flexibility there. So they would come back with some various options. And we will have a chance to meet on that and see those.
Okay. Long as you, long as you, you know, and like, I know y'all would step up down the board, but a lot of people don't ride down here and look at your board.
Sure, I can hear that.
The only time I run down here is to a meeting and it ain't all going to be.
And let me, I'll share, nobody wants to hear my, my tales of woe. I, I understand that. But I will say that one of, the first or second meeting, I think, that I chaired as mayor about a year ago, we voted very firmly to get a new sound system in here. We got bids, we approved it, we set aside the money, we're still waiting on a sound system. Because, I, I don't know, somewhere on the boat between here and China, it's, there's a chip, there's a chip missing. So that's why it's difficult to say, yeah, we'll be done by March 30th. But it's not happening.
I understand that, I understand that. I understand that, but all I'm saying is, when you decide or when you, like I told y'all before, the bike community, the churches, the best place to get something out. I would come get the, uh, the bike, only if somebody wanted it, I'd put it there. But we need to know what's going in the park. That's all I'm asking.
I appreciate that.
That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Keep, keep in mind also that there's much flex space in parks. One of the things that has been done over the last year or so is we purchased, how many additional parcels to add to this park? Three additional parcels to add to this park.
Yeah, but it's a common property, correct?
I'm sorry? That's a difficult.
Sorry.
Um, but things were happening, we're doing things, we work, and, uh, going forward, there's also flex space there. So just because what you, there may be something that you want in the community, it's not on there yet, doesn't mean that it cannot be added to it down the road, okay? But in reality, we need to, we need to determine our driveway, we need to determine all that stuff. And this engineering work will provide if, like, a, a framework, if you will, for all the rest of the components to go inside. So it's incredibly important to go forward with this. Even if we make modifications to this concept plan that's going down the road, it's really important for us to stay on track. Do this and move forward.
Can you say one thing really quick?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Um, I did want to, I meant to pick this up earlier. When we were there last time, they had changed the basketball court, um, from north to south to east to west. In the way the land is, it would be substantially more worth.
Just that, just that.
Okay, never mind that, never mind. See, you haven't seen that concept plan, you guys have a different.
This was at the last meeting. This is from the last meeting.
But that was in your packet, not our. Our packets are different, you guys know.
It's from the last meeting, it's still in the last meeting packet. It's just, it wasn't in the packet for this meeting.
Right, in the packet from the.
We're not, we're not approving the concept plan tonight. Okay, thank you, uh, we can't argue with the, we can't argue with the crowd. Uh, you know, I don't mean that first line, it means we can't do that.
I just think that we should.
So please, so please don't address questions from the crowd, from the podium with proper cards. Um, we do have to have certain orders, or, or, we just need to do things in a civilized order. That's not quite right either, but we've got to do it a certain way. Um, okay, we've had all of our blue cards, uh, have been allowed to speak. Um, we are approving, we have a motion to approve, that has been also seconded, to approve the engineering design proposal for CBBG grant number two, Melissa Park. Any further discussion from the commission, including the alternative and when it goes to work? I want a part of this initial, uh, design. You want engineering on the wall? Yes. Okay, so that, okay, so the.
I mean, I think it's the right thing to do, my hearing that it's getting private support to, to fund it, to, and, and it's artistic in value. I think it'd be the state not to do it. So to not do the engineering portion of it at this juncture, I think it'd be a mistake and just slow down something down.
Well, they, they can't do the engineering part because there's, the wall is still in the planning stage. They don't know how long the walls will be.
I got that, we're talking about an initial engineering for the project.
But we can't, we can't approve engineering dollars to be spent on that.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're.
To make it available for when they turn in the plan.
Yes, that's what I said, engineer.
If and when it happens. But they can't engineer it until they know what size it's going to be, correct?
And put it in, 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 in general, that it's gonna go.
In concept, almost in concept.
Okay? No, they cannot design the wall because you can't put it for a corporate tall wall the same as they can all that. So you're absolutely right, they can't finish the construction. This is, you have two different types of engineering in, in your figure, this is better than mine. One, you have site work, okay? Another, you have structural, actually doing themselves. And he's not doing that in this, you know, this is site work.
But I appreciate, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, I appreciate your pointing out that that was part of your motion because that's, uh, that is important for us to realize. Um, so any further discussions?
Yeah.
Y'all ready to vote?
Yep.
Zone one?
Yes.
Zone two?
Yes.
Zone three?
Yes.
Zone four?
Yes.
And I hope yes. Motion carries unanimously. It's another big step towards making, making real progress, a really big step, but thank you, everyone. And thank you, everyone, for participating in the discussion. I know it's a little tense, but we got, I mean, these are, we got to discuss it, we got to get through it. And, uh, each step along the way, it gets more and more real. This, this project is getting more and more real all the time.
On the heels of this four-week topic, is this a concept that engineers are going to be using to do this?
This one, from last month.
Yes. Change the, change the basketball court, the basketball court to do that.
Okay.
Or turn it back to your.
Basically, I'm not very much the same.
All right. Can, can we get the proposals made up and make them available to all the engineers who want to share them with the community? Because I want to go forward doing this right now so we don't have another pickup, another slowdown. But I also want to see our vision be back and if there is something else that wants to be done in here, we can pencil it in. Uh, and another thing is I want to hear back also, uh, from the community on phasing. I understand the building being a priority, I get it, I get it. Because you can use the court that's there right now, it's functional. It's not the best, but it's functional. The building, on the other hand, is beyond engineering, it has drawn on. And so I think, I think it's better money for us to spend than it would be, but I want to hear from the community and then we can go forward. Now, with that said, when bids come in for these phases, we look at that stuff and, and prioritize it. Um, we constantly run into a wall up here with funding. It's very difficult for us to order engineering and put stuff out for bid or in, in phase mode for stuff that we haven't generated the funding for. We need a funding mechanism for everything we send out.
Great. Anyway, calm down.
I got a question.
Mr. Administrator.
Lee. When the bids come in, can you let me know so I can get with the community so we can schedule a meeting and then I can look and see what the bid, bids are?
So we're just discussing down here, the bids are coming in, as you heard, this far, at Christmas. The engineers will look them over at medical recommendation of the engineering standpoint. Uh, but then we have, so it needs to be finished by January 1st. We have 12 days before next meeting. And during those 12 days, we can certainly leave the community and show them exactly what was bid, the located recommendation. This has to be located under CBBG rules. So, and yeah, we can certainly do that product with the community. We'll take it to the community, I have no problem with it.
So, so all that.
If you can get with the community people and figure out when, you can meet sometime between January 2nd and, what, the 10th or something?
It's the, I think it needs a 12, so the final 10th.
We can, we can make that.
That's fine. And those, uh, that, that final concept plan, there's been, I think it's our second final concept plan. Um, we've started numbering them rather than calling them final. But that is, again, part of the, part of the record. If anybody wants some of those, they can come to the office and request copies of that and they will be provided. Um, okay. New business, approval of the SFR loan applications, water distribution funding. Mr. City Administrator.
Mr. Mayor, Representative Commission, uh, this is, it seemed rather darn boring at the last opportunity. Uh, but we have, uh, again, a contract to assist the city applying for the, um, the second SFR grant, this time for water distribution. The, uh, procedure is in place. The consultant is actually a sub-consultant to the Florida River Water Association. We've double-checked the prices, it's actually $22,000 less than the competitive bid for Hummus Sasso Springs Water Management District. So we are recommending the particular contract from, uh, that firm, Andrew Heeser, working as a subcontractor for Florida River Water.
Could you set up a fund as a caution in the motion? Do we also ask that you waive any formal bidding?
I'm sorry.
Uh, fund as a caution, just to waive in the motion, waive any formal bidding requirements?
Okay.
Selection of that. Um, this, this prior, because you explain how they were selecting.
Thank you. Any discussion on this from the commission or any motion? I assume you're looking for, uh, a vote to approve.
Correct. Motion to authorize the contract to be executed. And if there's a clause, we can get out of it in time.
But a motion to, what, the clause was?
Tom?
I'm sorry, what was the last thing you said?
I, I, it has a state clause in this contract that we could leave the consultant at the time, something we could set aside in service. Where, where did this company, how did, how did we get? They are a sub-consultant, actually, we were introduced to them in our first grant application for the meters. Uh, they will be doing what's known as the grant administration. Uh, and in this particular case, Florida Regional Water is hiring them as a, as a sub-consultant to actually take the application to the SFR, uh, SFR board initially. But in their entire, they deal, they deal just with things like this and they also do software, I believe, to, through the SFR project. And the next item on the agenda is to start our asset plan. We're not there yet, but I would advocate we use a certain procedure for SFR funding to show them off. We have about four million dollars of funding that we've identified.
So they all want to continue with the SFR loan application process, basically we're just adding this, this company into the process as we as a facilitator, I guess, lack of their word. So apparently they're seeing. Um, will they expedite the process?
Yes.
Lee, could you talk a little bit about how, um, this kind of, whatever, I'm amazed, until November? Since, um, I believe it was supposed to do the first half, any comment?
There was, uh, there was discussion with, with Florida Regional, Florida River Water Association uh, for this particular grant application at the time we initiated the grant application to the meters. And they were under the impression that our experience firm is going to be doing it. We were under the impression that the Florida River Water Association is going to be doing it. Uh, and that discovery was just made about month ago. So now it's, and again, this is basically Florida River Water doing it, uh, through one of their subcontractors. So we're, and we've, we've had no issues with, um, both of them will go into the state at the same time and hopefully both be funded in February. And both of them will receive in February, if they are funded, which they have a condition to fund every application except, um, a discount rate of 44%. In other words, whatever we borrow, we're gonna pay back 66% instead of 44%. They're gonna grant this, I'm just talking myself backwards.
They're, they're gonna forgive what percentage of the.
They're gonna give it, they're gonna forgive 44% of the way you borrow. Too many tongue questions.
I know, I know.
Florida River Water.
If I understand this correctly, um, they'll apply this, apply for this by 12, 20th. Yes, and then DTS, 35 days review, and get back to us.
And they'll make a decision, I believe, it's early, mid-February, the meeting.
The possibility by the meeting in February, we, we would have a decision. If not, we can have a special meeting.
The decision is part of our meeting, certainly, shortly after this funding will do. And once the decision is made to fund the applications, then we enter into this, the city term contracts for, basically it's a loan application. And with that approval, then we'll have to go to the commission and approve, and then we'll start receiving the funds and be on the bid march.
What's the alternative to this?
Borrowing money from.
Because you have to have a go-between, or what, in other words, we're hiring and then people as facilitator?
Yes.
And, and an overseer?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other method that could be used to do it?
Uh, I'm sure if you were a larger community with a larger staff, you'd be able.
You can do it in-house, go ahead.
Everyone who's actually with users for these particular type of loans, because they're so detailed and they could get. There are two sources of funding for these with the state. One is their state funds, one are federal funds. You can use either one. If you have your state-funded monies, there are certain criteria that you have to adjust to, business plans, budgets, everything like that. Uh, if you go to the federal, it's not our choice, it's theirs. Then there's an extra layer matching the federal requirements to it. And that's, it's just the next one, it's a work.
I mean, I have to make a motion for a meeting, Eastern Associates. And, and to waive the formal bidding requirement?
Yes.
Second, I have a motion from Bosna Vassav, second from Commissioner Eckert, to approve using, what's the name? Uh, Eastern, Eastern Associates to, uh, further the SFR. S, no, SFR, oh, that's A. SFR, I'm reading it there.
SFR.
They never have to make fun of it. Well, so even, even in front, they're, they're saying they're different. All right, I do have, uh, on the blue card from Kelly Grassa, just speaking on water, on water meters. We're not really voting on water meters tonight. This, this, this particular grant is on the, the general, not a meter application, there's one for that. And this one is for the overall water system, so this is a different, not water meters. But if you want to address this.
Yeah. Something I would like to do, I guess.
That's fine.
Uh, Kelly Grassa, 626 John Street. Kelly Grassa, six-one-six John Street. How are, does anybody have any idea how many meters are still broken? That's one part of the question. Second part is, are we still in the middle of replacing those now? Or are we waiting?
To answer the question, the first grant application is before the state right now. And that will be approved in February hopefully. And if it were funded, we'd be able to replace them with all meters. And they'll be installed, probably in March or April. We estimate right now, probably third?
About four hundred meters.
About four hundred and fifty meters. They're not really borrowing this. We can send up minimum bills, of course, without borrowing.
How long have those meters been not running properly?
Long before I got there.
Well, we're talking about needing money. That's great coming, you know, if you don't have money.
We're still trying to get the money for it. It's, yeah.
But if you're charging more water, maybe you have more money for these purposes. And some have been not working since past two, three years.
I understand, we're working on business requests, that's all.
Not long. I'm paying, I'm paying full price, but I'm just saying that that money comes in, that people are paying the proper amount of their water, and it helps everybody else.
We're all painfully aware of it.
Yeah.
What we don't, what we don't have is a big fat check to fix all the problems.
And it would be, that's true. I mean, we could actually throw a check with us and fix the meters with their, you know. But it would be foolish to do that, because we can get this grant that has a forty-four percent forgiveness. I mean, it would be, it would be, we wouldn't be good stewards of the city's money if we didn't seek out some of these grant applications. That's what they're for. The state, we've already paid these taxes. If we don't get these grants, we're just letting somebody else, some other city.
But this is a malfunction with the actual meters itself. Right, we need to seek for reimbursement from the company who had the malfunction, rather than just say that we...
Yeah, I can answer that. We're one of many customers, this company, who were impacted by the meters. We actually piggyback the Collier County contract when we got the meters. Collier County has tens of thousands of meters, and I understand they're on local. The contract provides a warranty, and the warranty is the replacement of meters. And so they have been replacing the meters at a very slow pace. We're replacing them with meters that were, a company that gave us effectively...
With the same clause.
So, we, we have tried to negotiate with them. They say, look, instead of giving us a meter, why don't you just buy us out? And they won't do that. Contraction, they're only obligated to replace the meters. And because we piggyback, we don't have the ability to de-geat the contract. We have to take the Collier County contract. And that's the Collier County contracts that... Collier County and, when it became an issue, I looked, there's case issues all across the country of this meter, so.
Unfortunately, we're not as eager as Collier County, especially with the...
That's why we're...
We can't take that, so.
Well, that's why we're going after the grant to help pay for the replacement of the meters. Because at the rate they were going in terms of, they were delivering this, we would have to take the meters out, I understand, and we would have to send them. They would test them, confirm they were effective, and then send back and replace the meters. And then we would install them. It was a very, very slow process. And so, the decision was made, we couldn't negotiate something else with them. We had no legal recourse, because they were following the terms of the contract, that the best course of action was to get a grant to replace all the meters from the remade factory.
So I guess my question is, and maybe I misunderstood, we're not replacing any at the current time, because we're waiting on the...
Waiting on the funding? Yes.
Thank you. And see, some of those that are broken, are maybe manually reading some of those?
I'm sorry?
The ones that are broken and are not recording, are manually reading some of those?
Well, we have, there's, when we say broken, there's different kinds of broken.
Not according to...
There's some that don't read, are readable, and there's some that don't read at all. We can't pick a number out of it. Those are the ones that are causing us to be obsessed. The ones we can't read are readable, but we can still read manually, we do. So, we have that. And it's, it's, it's been a serious issue, everything. Those are, hopefully, getting close to being able to replace them.
Okay, well, I have a motion on the floor, and a second, to approve using this company and to waive the formal bidding requirements. Need further discussion from the commission? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, nine B, presentation and acceptance of the Stormwater Master Plan. Mr. City Administrator.
And Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, this monstrous document I have here to talk to you is the...
Little light reader.
Yes. The Stormwater Master Plan that we contracted with, probably sixty months ago. It does have, like the water master plan we've been talking about, it has identified immediate and mid-to-long-term projects that we should undertake. So, with the receiving and filing of this report tonight, the staff will continue to start working on the same process we did discuss with states revolving fund monies to be able to undertake the construction that's recommended in this document. And I'll tell you that the actual document is only about a hundred and twenty pages, seven hundred pages. The other five hundred pages of it are really just engineering documents and data that would be helpful to design projects. But they're incorporated in one place. This isn't all stuff we read, the fifty pages are actually material to read. It was actually done quite well. They identified fifty-six, I believe, different drainage basins within the city and get work with barely one square mile. So, we've done a fairly detailed analysis of the city. So, tonight, we've just introduced this document to you. I think we should probably receive it, file it. We'll start working on how to fund it, or promote it to the community.
Do we need an actual motion to accept this? Or is this more just a presentation, and at least they thank you?
This is a presentation. There's nothing, there's no action we can take, other than the staff will start working on things for funding. There's nothing we would need to, I guess it's just to acknowledge that we've received it.
Well, I will say, and I appreciate your explaining that the first hundred and twenty pages, I believe you said, are the basic plan. But in preparing that plan, the engineering side, they have to do a tremendous amount of research. And we will benefit going forward, the additional five hundred pages of that. That research is now ours. We paid the engineering firm to do it. They did it, they put it all together. And then, once they did all that research, then they were able to synthesize that into a plan, that first hundred and twenty pages. So we benefit from this going forward. And you said there's about four million dollars identified? I think it's four point four million. Four point four million dollars worth of Stormwater Project's projected costs. It's not done yet, we don't have the final cost. But projected costs, by next year, it'll be about eight point eight. And, that's the world of it. But, that's great. It's a, it's a huge step, a huge step. Thank you to the engineering firm, thank you Derek, for all the work. Really do appreciate it. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Given we had an opportunity to digest this a little bit, and then have a workshop, so we can come up with a lot, because what I'd like to do is prioritize and phase out, so we can look at a calendar going forward and see if we can slide things into budgets over time. I know that it's going to also, we'll look for grant funding, et cetera, as well, so. But I'd like to put a plan together to achieve this before, like the mayor said, it's become eight point eight billion. Because right now, I think we're looking at eight billion in pot of water and transmission systems. Now we've got another five million in Stormwater. We haven't talked about centers, we were...
It's kind of... Any further discussion on this Stormwater, from any other commission? I believe that we will digest this each individually in our own way. And do look forward to some workshop meetings on this, probably January. I don't really want to set the meeting simply down. Just want, just want to quick glance on that. Some stuff that's listed as a first part, and that twisted delay that's somewhat late, that's to be brought forward. I like the idea of putting the South High Street thing as part of what we want.
Sure, me too.
Absolutely. I don't really want to waste Derek's time tonight, because I would prefer an opportunity to divulge this information.
Sure.
No, absolutely. Derek, did you want to say a few words about this plan that you've spent untold hours putting together for us?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. Derek, once I've gone with the company. I oversaw this project. ECT, my former company, did the bulk of the work and modeling, just to make sure we're clear on that. I did review it, I did the site visits with their engineers and inspectors when we got called out, the problem areas. Kind of highlighted where we got called out the most, where we used some of the work. And that's kind of where we kind of directed some of the projects to happen. I do apologize, I don't have a presentation tonight. I can't keep talking. By the time we received it and placed it on this agenda, there was just no time to perform it. Put an executive sum together.
Do you, do you want to do that, that future, either workshop or...
Workshop would be more appropriate.
We'll coordinate that.
I would like to point out, and we've been joking a lot about cost escalating. That is a pretty real problem. And it's not going away, I think, in time soon. So, as much time as we can save, getting the first couple of projects, at least through the loops, getting the funding through the state. We set up the other four, so they match the SRF, you know, table of contents, so that they can just go down that section, this section, this section, so on and so forth. But I do think ECT did a good job on the city of Lake Island. Sorry it took so long to get here, it was due back in September. I think we have cost estimates and concept plans back then, like the forward reports. I do apologize for not tracking work on my own.
We have good disaster, good...
Yeah.
So, have the other things on our list, we did?
With the great flood in mind, were there any glaring omissions?
We added one project at the last minute.
Okay.
And I can go over that in the workshop.
Sure.
It was just, we got called out, obviously, the places that are intimated right now, it's a sad story. Really, you know, it scares me to death, the lake levels and heart, and that got called down.
Isn't that interesting?
The same thing happened in O'Five. And all those earthlings come through. St. John's River Water Management District, each track of it, there's a box on Lake Island that measures water level slightly effectively. And it goes back to nineteen ninety. So if you ever want to see how high that hell ever got, it's available online, from the district's G I S. I sent it to you.
Right after they installed that box, the water went down and didn't even touch it for years.
When I first started working in Lake Island, I would complain about the language, so. We were trying to solve that.
It's interesting, a little bit, part of engineering, and it's probably even more interesting.
Candy. I think I was amongst the group event in here the other day. Just happy you're here.
Yeah. Someday we'll have an...
Not today, I'll be there in.
Well, if you don't like the weather, it's hard to wait five minutes.
But anyway, that's all I have tonight. I'll work with something a little bit more written for a workshop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one blue card from Phil the Priest. Did I say that right, or not, I call it that. If you would say your name and address, I'd recognize you.
Slipper credit, three ninety-nine High Street. Hey, I'm looking at this storm improvement project here. I see that South High Street is like the number one on the list. Riding and walking might go up, there's nobody giving the backstop there. High Street, from Main Street all the way to John Street, we're all doing the backstop without diagramming. So, where do we fall into this, getting rid of the water out of the house of business here? There's so many, but I don't want to be told, I can't follow. And we emails, believe it or not, because last I heard, you guys work for us. We don't work for you. So if I go to email and call, just so you know, we can email a client every day.
That's the first question I asked was, can we have a workshop so we can prioritize this? And so, that's, that is a perfect meeting, and I will make sure that we have your contact information, so we can get all of you, so we do a workshop and come here, wish you the best, okay?
No, that wouldn't be great, because this water's not going anywhere, it's getting tired. You know, and I don't want to hear about South Street, I'm told tired of here, this is not... Anybody do some talking, nothing gets you. But they're not doing the backstop, we know. I do just want to be heard.
That'd be awesome.
Okay, I just want to be heard.
And you are the winners. I appreciate that, thank you.
Oh, thank you. That's why we're here, and you're rest, we were...
Well, I have, now, number eleven on your visit package, public forum. I have two yellow cards. First one is from Joe Pan.
Good evening, good evening, Joe. My problem is code before. And you always see the email from me. It stated the house across the street from me has had four or five vehicles parked in their front yard ever since they left. That's code by them. This is the gateway corridor, this is not just the rest of the city. Then they bring an RV in, and we say, oh, that's running under that. Well, next thing we know, they come to the city to get it from it, to put a double driveway. Guess where that RV is now? It's on that new driveway. The city, and I'm not blaming the person involved there, but the city told them they didn't need it from it to put a driveway, which is just, that's a BS. How do we know how far over is the driveway? Encroaching on a neighbor's property? How do we know, is there any sub-aggregate under that asphalt? It's an asphalt driveway, not concrete. Has the historic word been notified that in the gateway, there's a now black asphalt driveway? These are all questions that don't get answered. I think, Mayor, you asked me to file a report with the police department to try and... Then, an officer Scott, I don't remember his last name, comes over to my house and says, to my wife, I wasn't there, that he'd been harassing, which is absolutely BS again. And then also, a house two streets down, or two houses down, Mary Ann Williams went over to talk to them, and they basically said, get off my damn property. And the facts are, none of this is legal. Scott went over and told my wife that they can park that RV in their driveway forever.
Wow.
Not for three weeks, not for two days. The code says, three days. Load and unload, park it behind your house. Park it behind the fence company down there that has a place for them. So, I need help. Our code course of people, we don't have, see? We have a police department. We don't have a trained code course officer. So, and he doesn't know what codes are. So, we've got to fix this. It's a real problem, and it makes our city look like crap. Go down the street, look at it. Looks like a campground across the street.
Joe, who told you that they can park it there?
Who told you that?
Scott is, the police officer. Oh, okay. Because then we have another Scott here, and I was just...
Oh, no, because I don't know his last name. I'm sure he is.
I think Scott...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you want to comment, yes, or...
Yeah, I mean, would you look into the, you don't need permits to hold four driveway?
That that was a mirror. Okay. And would you also look into, I'm a huge fan of code enforcement that's done by complaint rather than have a Gestapo, you know, staff that's constantly on the lookout for people. I personally believe that step one, I'm sure Joe's done that already, we can go over and say, how can I help you? Okay, that's that's what we should do for our neighbors. But when the response would get off of my property, well, then we need to, we need to be helpful and supportive and and follow the rules or regulations. So I don't want to do that.
We need to, we need to address it with an email to you. Because this has been going on for some time. And there are variations on the theme shows. So we can respond to you writing and think you understand a little better the subject.
Can can I hear from the chief?
A little bit. Are you are you up to speed on this?
Yeah, there's something I don't want to say. That's okay, if I'm a baby, that's all right. I don't want to hear everything else. That's my business and stuff, so.
Yep.
If you have a question.
Yeah, and just in general, how do we go about if a citizen calls up, has a complaint and you you need a agreement that somebody has violated the code, what's the process you would achieve?
The process of this code enforcement will give them notice of violation, we give them a certain amount of time. Mostly depending, it's usually twenty-one days, depending on the violation. Something simple, you know, not going to get them, you know, a month, two months. But if there's something great, we work it, they don't, they don't correct the violation, it goes along with the ministry.
In this particular case, are there violations going on?
Not really. The the code, you're allowed to park an RV unless I'm a hundred percent, you know, wrong. You're allowed to park an RV on your property. And I believe the ordinance has changed several years if they have a harness, it's only prepared.
Do you do it to any big like, or start?
Not my question to your question, I'm not.
If you might check into that more.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And these people are there because their, their family was flooded in downtown. And that's why they're staying in the RV, it's a temporary thing. They had their house, these kids, second hurricane came flooding in. So they got a permission from the city to.
Got you.
To stay. So this temporary is not permanent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chief.
Next yellow card I have is from Kelly Frost.
Hi, this is my yellow card, right?
Yes, I'm the stress buster.
All right, Kelly Frost, that's six one six John Street. I just wanted to mention Stress Buster, this year's ten annual. Twenty twenty-two Stress Buster five K is. Saturday, sorry, Saturday, December twenty-fourth at eight AM. We will have packet pickup on December twenty-second between eleven AM and two PM at City Hall. In addition, twelve on the twenty-third following day, from three PM to six PM at City Hall. And for those last minute people preparing up their packet, we will be there early, right, right early on the twenty-fourth, day of the race. The packets will be prepared, ready to be picked up at seven AM. Also, I wanted to mention that sponsored deadline to get those logos in via on the race T-shirt or the back are the fourteenth of December. Right now, race amount has gone up. We are at thirty dollars until the twenty-third of December. And today, as of today, we are at five hundred and forty-two participants, which is up from last year. So we got revised, and last year we had eight hundred and twelve, as I said, eight hundred and one in previous meetings. But it's eight hundred and twelve. So right now, we are looking very good, very good for that day. Thank you so much.
Thank you for all the work you do on that. It is a great event for them and you've contributed that much, so much. And it does, and reminds me, and where are the money that?
The money is goes to, this year will be going to Melissa Park. It goes to our parks and playgrounds. In the previous years, it went to Lake Park until Lake Park was, that phase was completed. I believe it was the year before last year. And this year, we're going towards Melissa Park. So there's some money for our basketball court.
Yeah, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much. I ran it in months, I'm not a much for runner. I sang the National Anthem one year. I'm a better singer than I am a runner.
You can move it, just not with the horse.
I could, I could ride my horse a little.
No, because that people stutter.
Again, thank you. Nancy Weir?
So I asked a Nancy Weir, a quarter of five West Delaware. I asked a picture to be shared with you for E C D women's sign. This is kind of a weird thing. I know, I just asked for it and they said the county put the new one in when you come off by four area up there. So first plan is in Key West and they have these down here at night so that they slow down when they hit the deer. We probably lost three deer in the last year in our area. Would this be something we could consider for me and Summit area? Just to get people to maybe slow down a little bit at night? Apparently that's when they're getting hit. Just an idea. I don't have who to talk to other than you.
That's an interesting problem. We're up the problem.
We don't even have the, we don't even have the deer, you know, little logo signs of the year and.
There are a lot of deer strikes, I'm sure you could give us amazing numbers on that. I know we had. About one month, the chief says, and that's, those are the ones we know about. A lot get hit and run off in the woods and you might see a desert, but you might not. Yeah, there's a lot of deer. One night, my horses got out and I went out for about three hours on a scooter and walked along the city in the middle of the night with a headphone on, looking at eyes. I must have seen a hundred and fifty deer within the city limits. That happened. It's it's a funny, we'll take that. Now, there we go. My last yellow card is from Kurt Smith.
Kurt Smith, four ninety-one, West Delaware. I'm just gonna take you back to something that Nancy said is that I fully agree that something needs to be done on a summit. As the vice president of HOA over there now, we have a lot of speeding going up through there. Chief, I don't have the opportunity to sit up there and watch. Please, please, please. It's like a drag, it's just actually up there. It it really is.
I can say that I have been out there numerous times. I have yet to catch anybody going more than five hours.
Give me the river, but personally, but.
I'm just saying, it definitely gets terrified. It is, it's probably similar to these long.
Yes.
So I'm just telling you on a personal.
No, that's.
Been been out there and one car speeding by and it gives the impression that it's a lot that I did. I'm not going to name a road, but I go home every day, I take the same route. She comes out and she gals me, at least once a week, slow down, slow down, I'm going five hundred with the speed.
So. Well, you know, it's timing, we've got timing distance to give you a broad estimate, you know, and I'm pretty good at math. When I, you know, the clocking as far as you have, you know, last week in the phone twenty-five, I'm not saying we do that. You know, math is thousand, thirty-five, forty, regardless, thirty-five, thirties, which you pass it as well.
But where it might. And we are on our best, but I mean, it's twenty-six miles, it's city, that's roughly.
Yeah, but that's.
A mile we have that we can't be out there that long.
No, I know, I get that.
We did go out there.
And I do appreciate if you are shooting it, I really do. I just want, but bringing back the deer, you know, and it is, it is a thing that we're, I have a supplement yesterday that I will be fifteen on that road. So thinking possibly good careers sounds like a great, very good idea, so. But actually, what I want to pop out was code enforcement as far as, when we have reconstruction going out, do we have code enforcement going out to these new construction sites to make sure they're adhering to the rules that they're supposed to be doing when they're building a hole? And the reason why I'm asking that, in our HOA or in our subdivision, they're supposed to put silt in front of the drains, sewage, and it's not being done, that nobody's enforcing it. And I don't want the same problem around with the new subdivision that's going up. Now, or any other construction that's going on. My notice stormwater is our responsibility and I get that. But if it's in the plans to them to have to do these things when they build, part of the burden that they tell them to distribute, who then becomes responsible for enforcing that?
Are you saying that your HOA requires it?
I'm asking you all require it when they build.
Typically speaking, it's done at the, at the.
Because that's going to save a lot of our stormwater issues going forward, and actually feel like this place.
It's done in the site development stage.
Okay.
Once the site development stage is done and everything, the grass is supposed to be and the swales are in and the retention ponds, et cetera. An individual house is put in, is not required.
Okay, but during that construction phase, that beginning part of the clearing and everything else?
No, if it's, if the, in other words, in your subdivision over there, the site work has been completed out there a long time ago.
Okay.
I'm not talking about an individual site or individual house. I'm talking about Bella.
Okay, so there is a extension time is not required.
That's when it's not required. Now, we could look at a city ordinance that in a lot of it.
Okay.
But as somebody who's on the contractor side of it, and I watch people drive over them, they get in the way. Sometimes they're actually put in places where the distance is nonsensical because it's on the uphill side and water and everything. I I probably would be very selective about where I want, because silt fences in general are designed to keep particular matter out of water. And so if there's a lake that could be impacted by it, we could look at it, you know, as far as the city.
Okay, and that's something I would ask maybe a little bit, just because if we're going to spend millions and millions and millions on our stormwater system, we want to try to keep it up to standard as far as so we don't worry about going far. And I think at least, you know, this time we'll actually put a course before the car, you know, making sure it doesn't happen, you know, not to the city. As you grow, but asset construction inside the building.
In my opinion, it could probably be more than being done right now because we have an inadequate stormwater system than than is being done by lack of silt and construction.
But until we get this, we need to do something that prevent it from going, you know.
Where's the body of water over there to where?
I was going, shoot, we have, I believe, two retention ponds, one behind my house and one behind on High Street that at the end of that, I think they're just goes, we built a street down.
You only have the body of water, they got us a stream that crosses pencil, then you have some of them.
Yes, outside our development.
That's.
You know, so.
And typically retention ponds, you know, that's what they're there for.
Yeah. I like the particular, that's. You know, when it's often heavy rains, actually, I had a property in my property by, for a short period of time, but you know, it's a waterway, no property by, so. But if we just, we can do that, you know, if we're going to spend, you know, it's a dollar set, maybe put in organs in to protect the stormwater system going forward, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, appreciate it.
Okay, I have number twelve, mission reports by sound. Last time I started at one, the slide will start with zone four, if you don't mind.
I have to read because I like to make sure I work things properly. I do have two things. Okay. The first thing is, I was touched by Commissioner O'Connell's part in the works last month as he emphasized the importance of seeing the Melissa Park project to completion. That coupled with many years of Mr. O'Connell's service to the youth in our community as a scout leader and the six-year service as a commissioner. My family and I would like to donate a bench of appreciation with his name on it to be placed in Melissa Park.
That's very nice. We'll start with engineering.
Now, the other thing that I have is, there was an issue, and Karen, you're well aware of this one. Friday last week, when someone came in or called, I'm not sure how it was done, to purchase a cemetery plot. And they were told that we were not selling any cemetery plots at this time, which was not right. And they left very, very upset and disappointed because it's a very old family from Lake Island. And the girl wanted to know that she was going to be able to be very close to her parents. I have to say that I have to give Tommy credit, she answered her phone at nine forty-five on Friday night to help me give these people a little bit of clarity as to what was happening. So that was a mistake and should not ever be made again. And let me just add that when I did come down here on Monday to see how the process works, when I looked at the maps that we're using for that cemetery, literally almost made me laugh, right? It's a sad, sad situation, that cemetery in town. They've got pages taped together with little boxes written on them. There's sticky notes, nobody knows, I mean, we really, really have got to get serious work on that, trying to get that cemetery. Straighten that for sure. But anyways, that's just something that I wanted to let y'all know that, to be aware of. That that needs to be kind of top priority. So, and I'm done.
I remember when I, when I went into City Hall, requested plots to document which ones were veterans, I was given three different sets of plans. And they said, if those don't work, we got to card file.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's bad, it's really bad.
Well, I do know that we do need to work on that. Mr. Iker, number two? Why don't I go back? I mentioned an email, I would bring this up at the meeting. Seems like we lost another public works employee. Awesome, recently, the part of what's going on with our high rate of turnover and getting new employees. As you know, we've had issues with maintaining adequate public works staff. Often with design and we are, we're right now actively seeking a public works director. We have a hundred and twenty applications that filed this, one, eight, five? Five or six have been completed. What that means is that people have sent in, based on the district, that they want to become a public works director in the city. We then send them a fun application and only, of which only six have so far sent back the completed application. But we have some candidates that we think are certainly worthy of interview, we're going to do that soon. They could be much better shaped once we have an active public works director. But it it has to maintain a good working staff. Right now, we have three people and they're working very diligently. This is a very difficult time for the public works people because it's decorating time. And lots of things to decorate, lots of things to clean up, the floor parades and holiday events. But they're doing everything necessary, I've seen anyone who accomplishes what you have to do. Though we certainly could use a fourth and could use a third. And those are actually, there's actually two slots in the budget plus the third. If we need another one beside the fourth. Yeah, I just say, seeing us losing good and poor years all the time. And it seems like it's nitpicking details that I keep hearing about, so I believe. It doesn't sound, doesn't look good for the city. There's always, well, there's always two sides there in store. And we'll be happy to share with you. And we'll be happy to share those with individuals. It's, it's not something I think that the city would benefit from discussing probably. Thank you. You have the end this one? Uh, I just wanna make sure you're.
Well, if anybody has an extra blood, we got the blood mobile coming to the local police Saturday, between the clock clock. So if you got extra blood, you just come on in.
One blood will be accepting all donations.
From what, what hours?
Eight AM to one PM.
I expect, I have no extra blood. I, I just wanna say this about that. Um, I, I don't know what we need to do to solve those problems over there. I know it's gonna cost us, it's, it's just another piece of infrastructure that is what we have to. Uh, you know, when you have people that are here for thirty, forty years, they know how to build little pieces.
Right.
Major change, this is one of the trends. So, um, part of what we do here, or what we should be doing here, is looking at the transition of personnel uh, and making sure that we have processes and procedures that will pass from one to the next to the next city. Um, I don't expect, I don't expect our employees to be perfect, but I don't, I don't expect us to be perfect. But I also don't expect us to make the same mistakes time and time again. That's the difference. And so, I wanna be supportive in their term when it comes initially, but yeah, if we must keep making the same mistake, staff, my employee will keep making the same mistake, then it's time to, you know, cut, cut, cut the line and keep on moving. So, um, but second, you know, is to support their turn and not undermine and, you know, this call. I don't know how to change that behavior. You know, I lay so much discontent in our city and massively with the whole Facebook thing. That's why I have nothing to do with social media. But, uh, you know, we have to learn to live in the environment, and we have to be kind and, uh, you know, let's still get a job. Uh, if we're able enough, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, I have several things. Um, first, if, uh, you, you don't mind giving us a little bit of update on the gestation and meeting that'll be, um, coming up.
For the holidays?
No, no, for the, um, Echo.
Yeah, okay.
Echo meeting.
Can you get a translator? Uh, the, uh, the Echo brand, as you know, uh, or maybe you don't know, but we received it about twenty years ago. And again, in, uh, twenty seventeen, the goals of the Echo were changed to include a restaurant and a museum. And with the advent of COVID, the city, uh, really didn't live up to the spirit of that particular, uh, goal. The Echo individuals, uh, came to us and said we needed to submit new goals and they would study them. We did that, uh, the first meeting, I would say, did not go well. Uh, actually wasn't very happy. Uh, but we went back a second time and, uh, we made a second presentation and it was a much more positive reception from the Echo committee. Uh, and they are coming out to maybe a site visit, I believe on the twenty-sixth of January, uh, to the CAC. And to see what we have done in terms of making it a community center with an expanded, uh, history museum. The history museum is a key to that particular building as far as Echo is concerned. They're, they're not in the business, in their opinion, uh, which I will tell you also differs from their staff's opinion, but depending on the committee, the community centers are not something that they fund, which is a problem I referred to earlier in this part. Uh, but they do, uh, fund museums and we have made a good presentation on an apprehensive dual museum arrangement with the city hall, uh, museum and the, the second, almost the same size museum, uh, in the CAC building. So that is what, uh, is happening now. We will have a, a visit from the entire committee, not just the staff, they've been on months before, the staff. This will be the entire committee will come and actually physically see what we have done. Uh, and we are very optimistic that once that site visit is made, we will be able to pass muster and get back into good graces of the Echo individuals. Uh, and we have a, I think it's anything to note is we've had the loan and the money to build it for twenty years. Uh, and with that, at that time, can be a forty-year commitment to maintain the property as an Echo property. Uh, Echo brands that are made today are only carrying a twenty-year grant, a twenty-year time period to maintain the facility. So we're really having to live up to a whole standard, but that's not a problem. Again, we have made a good presentation and we are making the building, I think, very, uh, presentable in terms of what the goals they would like to highlight will be. And we're very optimistic that after the January twenty-sixth meeting, that we will be back in good graces. We will have changed our, our goals to be rules that they can adapt and live with. So, and I'm considering that particular issue, which was a very significant one, on point, as you know, uh, almost one that I think we could strike off as having been handled. At least we have a finger press at that point.
Thank you. Um, my second, uh, order of business, you'll see on your screen in front of you, these, um, decorations, holiday decorations. And, um, when we were down in Hollywood for the FLC conference, I was investigating, I guess it's maybe another, um, avenue to travel for revenue, possibly, um, to, uh, kind of piggyback off of what, you know, what the Butler Express does bring to us here in town. Um, we're very fortunate to have that, there's, um, Alan Cook did say something about, um, there could be seven hundred people that come in one night and it seems a shame to just let them come here and not have anything additional for them to do while they're here. So, um, there's extensive decorations out, one of these companies does provide. And, um, my thoughts are if it's something that is pleasing to everyone, we could, uh, have Santa or an ice skating rink or vendors, et cetera. And, um, we did just reach out to them, um, earlier this year to kind of, you know, call apart and spit off some ideas, but it was too late in the year to bring to you. So I thought what better time than in December while our minds are on it. And, uh, I think forward to next year as maybe a possibility. So I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of, um, something that might bring revenue to the city and, um, for you to think on. And hopefully we can come to something like you next year.
Yeah, I like the idea, did you, uh, do, well, we'll have to pop that over maybe in our next workshop meeting, which we already have two other ideas for, but that's, I mean, that's good. That's when that, that's when those kind of things go well, so I'll add that to that list.
Thank you, and then, um, so the third thing I wanted to bring up was sound system. We did touch on it just briefly earlier. Um, I know that we're looking at installing some of it recently. Uh, but I wanted to bring up the, you know, the sound panels as, you know, as I've gotten more time here. I noticed Echo room is, is quite drastic and I have trouble, and I, I do a lot of lip reading, um, here and here. And sometimes even the folks at the podium, so I thought maybe, um, not, not today, but maybe at the next meeting, we could, um, discuss sound panels, um, as a possibility because it seems a shame to not protect the investment we've made in, in the, um, equipment itself.
Sound panels were part of the contract with the sound development in here.
One more time?
The, the sound panels were part of the contract with the, I'm sure of the sound situation in here. So it's our right now. Well, we, we harped it out.
You took it out.
We harped it out.
That's what I was gonna say.
And, and with the understanding, and what was said to me was that we understood it was probably wouldn't be necessary, but we would install this and then probably the very next meeting we'd say, yeah, you were right, let's put in the panels. That's kind of discussional. It's still available to be done. They wanted to test the system to see how it worked under the new system before they put the panels in. Plus, like, the panels option wasn't there. I do love the concept of, of doing some of those panels out for partisan civil events and, you know, maybe get iconic buildings in town or whatever can make that so they're not just panels that can be. And I'm sure it'll be a little more running, but I think that any, uh, you can bring artistic components, it's not gonna be shifted.
And hopefully we'll talk to the sound system here shortly, so next time we're talking, probably.
Shortly being a relative thing.
Yeah, exactly. Um, and then lastly, I was just hoping to, um, bring up Virginia Drive for more time. I know there's been, um, so we've had some discussions, we need to, if we could just, um, you know, in, in this meeting, kind of inform everyone, um, where we're going in, um, finishing this project.
The sound panel?
Uh, Virginia Drive.
Right, thank you. Um, yeah, we have a problem with Virginia Drive. We had a problem originally, we thought we solved it. But now we really have, um, a problem with, uh, making it acceptable to the, to the community in that particular area. Uh, and I'll be working with the, the city engineer, but we have, we, the, I don't know how to describe it. With the, the front yards or the four homes that front on that particular part of Virginia Drive, uh, are not user friendly. Uh, they're actually a drop off. You come down and make a very sharp drop into the swale for drainage purposes, which was necessary to do. Uh, but I think our, our, our issue is we need to, uh, level off and make a nice jump slope from the swale back to the, uh, the yard or the citizen so that it's a completed project and not have that drastic cutoff.
Or regen.
Yeah, or regen. Uh, except that there are, there are people who wanted to, uh, drive, uh, drive over, uh, that area and they had traditionally done so. Uh, I would note that it is not legal. Uh, you cannot, you don't have to park your car except on the driveway in front of your house. And, uh, that's just a, an observation, there's a number of people down to do that. Uh, but it is technically not in the code. So there are a number of things that, that we're thinking about doing.
If you get a hot bar.
Yes, that's true.
Oh, huh. Um, so, my friend Portia will be speaking to you soon, but she was one of the four properties. And in her particular case, uh, she had a pretty distinct driveway. Uh, and we have evidence of it from photographs on Google. Uh, she was required to put in a second driveway, uh, so here we're replacing that driveway. Uh, because it did lower the road eighteen inches, which made the driveway, uh, unacceptable. And having altered that front, front yard of her home, uh, we feel the obligations there to reconstruct driveway with the new elevation of the road. And I'll take it that we'll find it a difficult concept. But there is another issue unrelated to that having to do with the drop off of, and I'm, this is just an observation that came up today. Uh, when I was out there without the engineer, now that was a plus or not, but, uh, we really, we've not, we've not done everything that I think we need to do on that particular project to satisfy the residents on that street. And I think there's still some work that we need to do. I think that's basically the story I wanted to relay to you tonight.
Well, let us know if, uh, if the engineer would grant it.
Uh, I would do that. Uh, we do have, uh, a contract lined up to put in, uh, Portia's, uh, second driveway. And we'll be proceeding with that, but that's again, only part of the solution. That, I mean, it's not, it's her part of it, but not the entire street. But then, we have, she just.
She's behind you, be careful.
She don't have a lot, so.
But anyway, so that's where, that's where we are. And Portia's been very, very patient because we promised to put up a second driveway about a month, two months ago. Uh, we still haven't done that, uh, so, but we, we have not forgotten and we will not regret it. Uh, and we need to do it. I just would wanna make sure we did it, it was the, the, a part of the finishing of that particular project. Pat and, anyone?
Under.
Okay, um, we're, we're actually in a, uh, commission, commissioner's report by zone. Uh, but, so Blue Card's required, but if you wanna speak, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Portia, I lead a five-six-nine Virginia Drive. Um, Lee's been helpful the last couple of months, trying to help us, yes. But our way of living is totally changed. We can't even get into our backyard. Um, the engineer and I said that our road was never dropped and it's a huge drop off, like, huge. I was standing on the hill that's, if you're anybody else doing by there, you know, my road used to blend right into the, the yard blended right into the road. Now for some reason there's some teepee on it and it broke off. My husband also almost flipped his truck trying to get it in the other driveway to, so bad that the neighbors came out screaming. What's going on? So there's a problem, I've lived there almost thirty years, never do I complain, I don't have a problem. This is ridiculous and it all goes to the engineer. It doesn't work, it has to be fixed. Um, there's no reason it should have been dropped and the drain we all put in does not work. None of the silk screens have been pulled out of the drains. Nobody comes down there, nobody's moved it since, uh, the fourth, uh, Fourth of July. Nobody moves it. So I feel since I know it, I should send the city bill. Cause that's my time. But we all get neglected over there, like, oh, it's no big deal. We've been fighting this for twenty years, that was Ian was here. And now nobody has in the city records because the city does not keep anything longer than seven years. So I've asked for a few big records, you know what I'm talking about. And then the problem is in the last two years, Lee came in with a headache of it, that that started. And nobody knew anything from that point. Then Austin leaves, not the first Austin, not the second Austin, I didn't know those two. And then he leaves and nobody knows anything that's going on over there and I call Lee and he doesn't know either, because, uh, nobody communicates.
Right.
So there's a, we gotta fix this. I don't wanna be up here, I don't wanna complain, but I want my life back to where it was. And my driveway is now so steep, we cut it down at least, what, a foot and a half?
Eighteen inches?
No, no, from my, from my garage, we had to drop it, it was so steep. Yeah, at least a foot and a half. So if I have a leave, how would people get the garage?
Well, I, I will have to come back down there and look at that again. Um, we do have, I mean, that was a big project and every project has a punch list at the end for you.
There's batteries too that have been wired up.
Yeah, there, that's a good way to say this, man, is there, there is still a punch list left in projects.
Absolutely.
Uh, the project is, we really can't say it's completed because it just isn't, doesn't work the way it should. Contractor faces, and everything that Portia said is absolutely true.
I was excited, I don't, I just wanna know if it was signed off, but I don't understand how it was signed off, it wasn't totally comfortable. Punch out like you just said.
Yeah.
And we hate it.
How do you get, that, how to get clues if there's still a punch out?
Well, it's, the contractor built it according to plans. And, and they, they built, they built it according to plans, and well, I understand, the plans, the plans leave with this desire and the completed state. And that's what I'm saying, it's a punch list, once you see that it was built this way and now, that way didn't really work. So now we gotta, we gotta re, rejigger some of it. And that's, that, the original contractors are responsible for that, so we can't pay them.
I don't think that's the engineer, engineer.
Well, it could be, it could be. Um, but we do need to fix it. Well, it could be, it could be. Um, but we do need to fix it and we need to, we need to get through that. And compared to the entire scope of the project, it's a relatively small amount of people, but it's very impactful on your lives. And I get what you're saying. So we don't want to, we don't want to ignore it or, nor, nor prolong it. We need to, we need to de-pollinate. Um, so thank you. For, for my report, if you will, um, I wanted to say that the Lake Island Christmas Dance or Holiday Dance, whatever they call it exactly, uh, done by the, by the League for Better Living was very nice. Um, and they made an announcement there that they'll honor your best fall. Uh, was it just Lou or was it Drew Manzey? And Lou Anstey, that's all, uh, at their upcoming, um, annual gala. Uh, so that was a, a nice revelation there. Um, we did have also the Veterans Day Ceremony here at City Hall and that was very nice. We wanted to thank Roger again for making that. A special occasion. Appreciate that. Um, I do want to remind people not to forget the parade on Saturday and, uh, Christmas tree lighting and everything that takes place. It's going to be a, a wonderful day. Uh, and the, the stress buster on the twenty-fourth.
And the race.
And the race.
Race, Race Across America.
Oh, Race Across America. You want to go ahead and talk about that for a second?
Saturday seventeenth is the designated day for the Race Across America on the Veterans Day at our cemetery. We'll be starting at Subaru Memorial Cemetery at noon, going to ceremony and race laying at that time. And then from there we'll go to, uh, Lake Island Pasadena Cemetery. Um, the third cemetery that we do is a kind of a isolated private cemetery. It's Subaru, not super, um, Pervert Cemetery on, off of John Street. Uh, it's behind people's houses and they've kind of branded us like a right away to get to it once in a while, so.
What time did you say the first ones that we start at noon, noon? Thank you.
Um, and we did have, um, a fundraiser going to get the race for it and we were able to get almost all the race. Almost there. I have to look at the thing. I think we're about forty short.
Has it closed?
Huh?
Has nomination closed?
Well, we can't get them from Race Across America, so any money that's been donated, that's left though, we go down the Lowe's, Home Depot, whoever has the sum of the race. You get it once. I haven't turned around yet. So we will, we will, if anybody still wants to donate, we'll still take a donation so we can do that, but, uh, it's, uh, it's still good.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, that's all I have to, to announce at this time. The next thing on the agenda is I have a thirteen A request for a workshop, user fees versus assessments. Mr. City of Detroit. And Mr. Mayor, with permission, uh, we had talked about doing a workshop to discuss the pros and cons of user fees versus, uh, assessments. Uh, we were going to waste the rest of the first of the year, which was just about a toss. Uh, it is a very complex, complex topic. Uh, every time you, you think there's positive, there's another negative. So those are the things we need to just bring out and discuss with the commission on how you want, how you want to pay for services and what mechanism you'd rather prefer. Obviously the city determines and carry the load on that discussion. Uh, and I think you'll find it very interesting. I find it interesting talking to the city attorney about it anyway. Uh, but then we also had two others in the city, perhaps more than that, and I suggested at this particular time. One of them is, uh, the Vice Mayor had talked to us some time ago about, uh, discussing the permit fee, not the permit, uh, application for a building permit. We get it, I forget what it is, a building permit application. Uh, and the things that an applicant is required to do. Right now, and we're not a union, it's a one size fits all. Uh, everybody has to go through the motions of all the requirements to satisfy the, the issues of building permit. But some of them simply don't apply in certain cases. So you have a heavily wooded lot of say, you know, two, three acres and you mean it's, you really don't have a drainage problem. And so why do you go through the, the difficulty of having to survey a lot and actually survey the drainage? We do have a requirement then of maintaining the trees. That's a separate issue, but again, uh, if you don't have a lot of particular size, there's no trees, there's no need to try to satisfy that. It's just, uh, I'm not sure this time I'm explaining it right or not, but it's something that Vice Mayor and me agree can cheaply, quickly discuss with the commission. And maybe we want to change the process. It's up to you. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I can explain it in detail, but the reality is, um, large lots are in and very small lots really require different intentions of terms. And all I want to do is if we can create an option for the homeowner of large lots, we determine for large lots, to be able to pay a fee to let's say the city and the neighbor or whatever, and someone who's knowledgeable, meet on site and just look around. Oh, wow, you're eighty feet above sea level. Yeah, you don't need to parent a plant. You're building your house that's a hundred fifty feet away from the peninsula, so it's not necessary. On a tree survey, oh my God, you got seven hundred thousand trees out there. No, you don't need a tree survey. So there's sort of things that apply to the current set on quarter acre lot and subdivision that do not apply. So it's, if there's a one-time fee that it can pay on the front end, so you can eliminate some of these things, uh, which costs money.
Yeah.
It's costing real much. And, um, and the way we work, we could work such a way of it's that you don't have to do this in the initial application state. City deserves the right. That if you feel like you need to do something before your specific occupancy, we can ask you to do it. But, you know, at least it keeps people from not having to do what seems to be, uh, just foolishness. You know, it goes, anyone obvious that's stand there on top of the hill and realize, okay, your property, uh, is, is so far away from any other part. You're, you're not going to flood anyway. And that's why we do drainage surveys, to make sure that you don't flood. Okay? We do tree surveys, uh, because, you know, we like trees, we like oxygen. That's important. Okay? But, you know, if, if I'm on a forty-eight parcel and I want to develop a forty-eight parcel, I can take every single tree down. But I want to build a house on it. I have to count all the trees. It doesn't make sense. So anyway, I just want to review that whole checklist and provide an opportunity for a large homeowner to, uh, to have an option. Thank you.
And from this next meeting, there may be several other items we should put on, um, in workshop agenda. It's, uh, the recent referendum is actually set a date so we could have a date to shoot for more development agenda and backup materials. I've suggested the eighteenth of, of January, say for about that. So I guess we're looking to input it with the commission. If that's an acceptable time, it's a Wednesday. Well, so far I have as far as workshops that have been mentioned, there's stormwater, uh, user fees, uh, versus assessments. Uh, also, something's even perhaps be, you know, a part of that, uh, and Christmas decorations, hospital is there. Um, so we've got quite, quite a bit to spend the, uh, I mean, that's a lot, just, just seeing one of those things to be quite a bit. We can't do more than one. When do we want to do the first one, I guess, is what we're against, um, right, not against, but what we're looking to. Does, uh, does the eighteenth, Wednesday the eighteenth sound good to the rest of the commission? And if so, what's a good time to get? For workshops, I like daytime, but I know a couple of people work. Um, I don't know how, and I'm looking at you because you're really, I'm going to hear right now.
It's fine.
Is it okay?
Yeah, it's flexible.
Okay.
Is it, is any of this time sensitive? Will we have to do it during the holiday season or?
I'm sorry.
Is any of this time sensitive to where we need to do it during the holiday season?
No. So we're looking at when, January eighteenth?
Uh, I'm just saying.
Oh, you want, you were thinking about building sooner?
No.
Oh, okay. Not sure what you're saying there.
I'm just saying, uh, people have, uh, be during the holiday season, do something on December fifteenth.
Oh, yeah.
Let's give her full attention.
I agree. Well, how about January eighteenth, Wednesday at nine AM, ten AM? What's the? Wow, I slapped you. I'm sorry.
It would have been like three or more dog in the morning, but that's okay. Yeah.
Welcome to that.
I'll do, what, yeah.
Ten AM? That's my good.
Ten is good.
Does that work for staff?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I've, I've got waving hands at me, but I'm not sure why you're waving hands on, on scheduling a, a workshop.
Because why can't they be permanent other? Yeah.
The public can come. They're, they're open to the public.
Yeah, a lot of people work during the.
That's what I, that was my part that I just like to keep on.
Yeah, I know, I know you've said that, you've said that to me before, having all the meetings in the evening. Uh, but have workshop meetings in the daytime works, I think works well. It's a difference dependent, I guess. Um,
That's because it's almost there.
The commission, it's a, if you will, sir, it's a...
It's a good point.
It is a commissioned workshop. And...
I mean, in, in reality, let's, let's just deal with it in reality. We get elected, this will work for you. And this is a workshop between elected officials and staff. Once we make some decisions that you guys elected us to make, then we sit down and we run a basket. Now, if you want to take the time to be at that workshop, I think it makes sense to be there while our staff is here. So we know we can bring them in extra at the end of the day and stuff. It would be nice and polite thing to do to make it available to our citizens so that any, everybody could be, be there, but I don't know that functionally it's the best.
And, well, I understand your, your suggestion that it be in, in the evening. Uh, I think it's an agree to disagree moment. Um, I believe workshops work well during the day. And they are preparing what we're going to be doing in commission meetings, which are in the evening.
Well, the workshop you have that, you have this open also for the public to speak and that as well. And that's what I'm trying to get at, is that we can't have our input from that workshop that might be a bit of a win.
But you can.
Yeah, if I take time off on work.
Where you can, you can always write them off.
Can you still be rid? So.
Well, that's, again, again, um, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I don't, I don't, like I said earlier in the meeting, I don't really want to discuss things with the audience in general. If you want to, if you want to speak on a, on a topic, please fill out a card. Um, I don't want to get to that discourse like this. It's unproductive.
Thirteen A.
Okay, well, if you'd like to take so do you.
I already spoke my piece. He spoke here instead of mine.
If, if, okay, okay. No, I, I was going to get to that. I, I just, we weren't there yet. We were setting up our meeting date. Um, and you're right. I mean, I'm not arguing that. It wasn't, that wasn't my problem. Um, so do you want to do it? Ten AM on the eighteen? Okay. Next on the agenda is purchase of a tractor and a utility vehicle. Mr. Mayor, with permission, uh, with the two hurricanes, uh, we had a number of issues with our equipment. We've worked through, I think, uh, almost all of them with the exception of, of the need for a second tractor. We have one working tractor, one tractor that's just simply not working, cannot be, uh, fixed. The parts are no longer available. So, and that is our most frequently used piece of equipment is a tractor. Uh, we had gone through the sheriff's, the Sheriff, Sheriff Association Florida has a competitive bidding process. Uh, they did have a number of vehicles, including the equipment, tractors, obviously the annuaries, police cars and et cetera. Uh, and then you can take it back on those particular purchases. We had gone through that process. We identified the type of vehicle that we really want is a tractor. Uh, and we've gone to the local dealer and asked them for a proposal based on Florida Sheriff's Association price. The local contractor, or the local dealer for the Kubota, uh, has not been able yet to match that price. And I don't understand why. Because the Sheriff's Association dealer that Kubota put in is the one that you want to purchase from. I mean, it's about eighty-nine dollars less than the local dealer. So it's a matter of, of getting the best price for the equipment. If he would authorize us to purchase it at the sheriff's, uh, price, we would then have the ability to purchase at that price. Either we prefer locally, but if not, we would get it from the Sheriff's Association dealer. So that's, that's what we want. Also, we have no engineer utility vehicle. Uh, we have two. There are services now of three. But I would prefer to wait until we have the public work director to, uh, go through the, uh, the list of equipment that we have and get his recommendation on what opinion we could change. And we're about a month away from that. So I'd like to reduce this particular request down just to the tractor. Understanding that there may be elements coming down the road. Incidentally, that the tractor is funded in the budget, so it's not, it's not really something we're not anticipating. And, and how much is that? Uh, it's, uh, probably thirty thousand. What, what is, what would the rental cost? Was it, can you find out what a rental cost for one?
Uh, well, we could find out. And the reason for that is the second part of what you said about the public director. But I was thinking along that what I would prefer to see is once we have a new public director announced, first thing I'm wanting to do is assess what we have, what we need, what we have in mind, what needs to be replaced before I purchase anything. But if we need something in the meantime, if we need to rent something for a couple of months or, so.
I can tell you now because we're in a public meeting, that's the same thought there.
Okay.
So, uh, we really, and that, I, I find that's perfectly acceptable. I'm just going from the experience of a hurricane, we definitely have the need.
Oh, he knows of that event. Well, that's a perfect one-off sort of scenario where you go after rent, so.
And that's, and that's why I would like to have your opposition purchase that particular piece of equipment. We'll save everything else for another public director.
And I'd almost wait, I would very like to wait until we have that person because they may have some insight into, you know what, we don't need to spend thirty thousand for tractor. We need to spend sixty-eight thousand because we need to track that with this. And so that, that's the kind of feedback I would want from somebody who's been in business long enough to understand.
I reserve the wait.
I mean, that would be my approach. I'm not speaking for the rest of council.
Well, I, do you have any idea how much renting a tractor of, of that, of this size? I have no idea. Maybe I'm just being cheap. If I were to rent a tractor, we would just split out the work. So we, we had this one tractor to use. We just, instead of having two projects, go on each of our tractor, uh, we just spread out those projects so that we have the one tractor. It's, it's used now practically every day anyway.
I'm not saying we don't have the need for it. I'm not saying that at all.
Oh, okay. And that does reduce demand on the, on the staff as well. If we did, does lose projects out, somebody's... Right. And, uh, this whole agenda I've started with our experiences beginning with a hurricane and what and, uh, some things, you know, we worked around satisfactorily because they're only things we would use during a hurricane. So it's going to be to buy equipment to replace it or supplement that. Um, so, but anyway, that, that's fine. We're not going to have a hurricane. fine. We're not going to have another hurricane for a while. Uh, and we will have a public director before that. So I'm fine with that.
Mother nature does go by the calendar.
It'll go, it'll happen until June first. There, there, if, if we could just dispose of that, I think there is one more. And it comes from our workshop we had with the developer, property owner of the, what used to be known as the Autumn Mall, Orange Camp Center, as it's known now. Uh, and that had to do with the suggestion that we retain, uh, somebody to do a financial analysis of the benefits to the city, uh, from the design of that particular project. Uh, we have two proposals. Neither unfortunately in writing, uh, when we do that, the project firm through the East Central Regional Planning Council, which is our contract partners, although it is a separate firm that they contract with, uh, and that would be from twelve to twelve thousand, fifteen thousand to do that analysis. I also went to our, our finance director, you know, Zach Chalfour, CPA with James Moore. Uh, he is intimately familiar with our budget. He's just the government financing, that's his specialty. Uh, and he would charge anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars. Ten, that's, he's a, not to exceed, but he's saying somewhere in that range. And I mean, I had not thought about the number. Uh, I would, it's the commission's choice, but, you know, I would suggest, uh, we go with our finance director. There'd be a lot less education we do have to make. Uh, and he would probably sit in his league with us. So that would be my suggestion. If you want to do the financial analysis, we'd go with our finance director.
I have a question, uh, Mr. Rowley, if you don't have an answer tonight, um, if we go, if we go, and I would just go. Okay. Uh, if we go through this process and we wind up going with you on your project, um, would you reverse us for the cost of?
Actually, I've, I've already paid a quarter of a million dollars of maintenance fees to add to the property to the city.
That sounds a lot.
No.
Okay. No, no problem. It's okay.
I think it would be a bit unfair.
No problem. No problem. I think it is a reasonable thing for us to, to know what we're voting on. And the only way we can know is to have our own number put together. So hiring our own CPA to do that, I think, eminently wise. Um, does anybody, anybody want to make a motion or, or throw in some comments on this?
How do you have to make a motion? We can hire James Moore to do a, uh, financial analysis of the deal or our standpoint, uh, to see what the city's expenses might be and how much tax they would like to arrive.
And if he now receives, uh, the government, and I think it would be, I'm guessing several reaching five and seven.
I'll second that. I have a motion from Pastor Batso, a second from Commissioner Becker, to hire James Moore Associates, or whatever their exact name is, to do a financial study on the Orange Camp Point project to, from the city's point of view, to see what our expenses would be on a project of this nature and what our income might be. It's a projection, but, um, one that he can make and watch people. So, any further discussion? Anybody begin it? Want to talk about that and look like it? Also, all the favors are aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like so? Most curious. I think that's an important thing. Thank you.
If we can go back to the tractor thing, just to let you know that it says that the specifications for both vehicles, our vehicles are attached and it wasn't compacted, even though it's a new man. Well, we will, we certainly have the, the right, the right amount of food you can send.
Do you think that, uh, will you be able to, to contract that one after that tractor work to, to take the load off of, and to really be successful for the next month?
It's, it's not that we're suffering. We just, if, if something happens to the tractor we're using now, we'd be in difficulties. And then we could rent one if we needed.
I would, I would get to, I would call a salesperson in from one of those, you know, big, uh, equipment companies and have them give you prices on lots of different stuff and to rent it. So you know, you have a, and have that back in your house and update in that way. Because sometimes, it's like when my wife wanted to buy a boat and I said, I don't want to buy a boat. I said, I'll tell you what, I said, we'll start a fund, we'll put extra dollars a month. And anytime you want to go out and go and compare it to fifteen hundred foot cruise ship or twenty dollars, twenty foot bass boat, we'll just rent what you want. And after a few years, um, we still have money in that account. We'd have both, we would have. So it's the same sort of scenario. You could go get what you want and fit what you want if it's a rental. Uh, and, uh, and then once we get a good guy in here, it's a very complicated. Not, not that you don't have anything, but it's not.
But everybody does. Whoever we get in the, as a public works director will have certain, certain desires for equipment, let it go out, and certain proclivities. I mean, I, I use a tractor on my little, my little Porter Rakers. And, uh, it is the catch-all vehicle for doing almost anything. It's a, it's a, it's a necessary vehicle to have in your stable. But tractor means a lot of things, different things to different people. I agree with you. It would be nice to have, have that come directly from that person. So. Okay. Mr. City Administrator, is that the end of your?
That's it.
Report? Okay. Well, then we are closing remarks. I think we should close.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Yes, happy holidays and Merry Christmas. And thank you very much. Good night.